I'm gonna unmute.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Here.
Ms. Dietz?
Here.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
And Ms. Drizinovich?
Here.
Uh, Mr. Gray and Mr. Lisco will be joining us later. Um, and Mr. Palmizzano and Mr. Drews are absent. And then I'll keep an eye out to see if Mr. Coppoli joins late.
Okay, ready, sir. Good morning, April.
Yep.
All right, uh, everyone could please rise, uh, for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, with that, I think I'm gonna go to Mr. Kennedy and let him, uh, run the, uh, uh, Mr. Kennedy, could you please give us the administrative agenda that we need to cover before the actual meeting starts, please?
Sure. It's just the, uh, Open Public Meetings Act statement enhanced with the, uh, coronavirus regulations. So, uh, Mr. Chairman, just for the record, uh, we will disclose that this is a lawfully convened meeting of the Belmar zoning board. Uh, our awesome board secretary has arranged for a notice of this meeting to be placed in the borough's two official newspapers. And the advertisement included the lot, the, uh, zoom-in information and the login information. And it was posted on the municipal, uh, doors where they could be visible from the outside, filed with the borough clerk. And the notice was also filed on the municipal website, even though that's not statutory requirement. It's just good practice to do that. So, uh, Mr. Chairman, it would be my humble opinion that this is a lawfully convened, uh, and duly advertised meeting of the Belmar ZBA.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, and we have some resolutions. And then, um, just, April, just so I'm clear about tonight, I know that we had Verizon pending and 1808 B Street. Are there others?
Uh, we had the application for Roseanne Whedon, uh, 315 12th Avenue. Uh, Kevin and I spoke to Roseanne last week. Um, she is still working out her, uh, with her neighbor the concerns that she had. Uh, we're going to carry her application to May. Um, and because of the length of time that's passed, she's going to renotice.
Okay, excellent. So, just these two for tonight, then?
Just the two. So, we'll do the 1808 B Street first, and then John and Phil should be here in time for the Verizon application.
Perfect. So, Mr. Kennedy, if you would please go over the resolutions from prior meetings that we need to certify.
Sure. Uh, so the first one is the Almeida Resolution, 419 10th Avenue. Now, that one was a, uh, you recall that was a five yes and two no vote. So, it was approval. Um, so I, uh, sort of tried to enhance the resolution to reflect the items that you all discussed and debated and analyzed. And in a nutshell, um, this application was requesting essentially three things: renovation and conversion of an existing two-family structure to a single-family structure, and then construction of an addition to the to-be-converted, single-family home, and construction of a new detached garage with garage apartment above the same. And basically, just because of the nature of the application, um, uh, we, uh, I want, I'll just get you, make sure you have a little bit of a flavor of this, um, resolution. And Ted, this was the one where they, they said that they're not going to entirely demolish it. They're going to keep the existing foundation or main intact. Um, so I put that in there. But also, the, uh, findings of fact, just some of the just more generic ones were, um, that you're saying if this resolution is adopted currently, the pre-existing non-conforming two-family use of the site is rather pronounced as a two-family structure. And the existing dilapidated nature of the existing two-family structure clearly reveals and highlights the non-conforming use. And what we're saying is the conversion of that existing structure to a single-family home will result in a much more conforming structure with a single-family look and feel, and that the non-conforming use will be relegated to that, uh, new, uh, garage slash accessory structure, which will, from an aesthetic point of view, minimize the overall non-conforming nature of that application. And we're saying that the, uh, uh, the owners are gonna occupy, at least that was the testimony, and at least having an owner occupancy, uh, presence is generally a good thing. And, uh, we're talking about the rental, uh, option. Now, the testimony was that the, they, uh, that that garage apartment can only be rented on an annual basis. So, we went to, to town, basically saying, A, you know, uh, 'cause there's been recent laws and cases that have come out that say we, as a zoning board, cannot discriminate against renters or, uh, appear to discriminate against renters. And clearly, that was not the situation at all, and there was no discrimination here. And this restriction was tied in to just an annual lease versus a summer lease, and that promotes the interest of, of tenants. And it is important for, uh, the borough, like all boroughs, to offer a wide variety of housing options to, to its, uh, uh, residents. And the applicants agreed to sign and record a deed restriction to memorialize, perpetually memorialize this obligation to only rent the garage apartment on an annual basis. And then we have continuing, um, between the, the, you know, the presence of the owner occupants on the property, um, and coupled with the presence of the annual year-long, uh, tenant situation, um, you all, if you agree, are finding that this will significantly reduce the overall intensity of the existing, uh, site, and that, that those restrictions, um, are gonna make this more compatible, this, this structure, or this property more compatible with the surrounding uses, even though it's still not conforming. And we basically have, um, uh, during the public hearing process, there was an intense and good-bait debate as to the overall merits of the application. Specifically, there was a concern that the existing site is non-conforming, and the applicants have an opportunity to make the site totally conforming. That is, there is a concern that if the applicants were to eliminate the garage apartment, the use would be converted from non-conforming to conforming. And the applicants were not willing to agree to such concession after review and discussion. The majority of the board are of the belief that the fiscal improvements and the conversion of that main structure from two-family to one-family and the annual lease restriction do, in fact, represent a better overall zoning alternative for our borough of, of Belmar. And then, um, let's see. We have also, uh, talked about the actual, uh, in terms of a certificate of occupancy, the testimony was that there were up to 12, um, occupants in the, uh, could be up to 12 right now. And with this approval, that, uh, total number will be knocked down to approximately six. So, again, that's just another way to lessen the overall intensity. And in terms of the conditions, Mr. Chairman, I think, uh, they were, the ones of note were, um, inclusion of a note confirming that the pervious pavers shall be utilized for the driveway, the inclusion of a note confirming that the eastern garage setback shall be increased from three feet to five feet. Um, I think there was a discussion that they recalculate the impervious coverage. I'll have to talk to Ted on that. Um, inclusion of a note confirming that there should be no further intensification or expansion of this structure absent further approval of the board. Air conditioning, condenser locations in the compliant location. The garage apartment shall only be leased on an annual basis, and the same shall not be leased on a seasonal or summer basis. And that is, uh, to be recorded, a deed restriction, uh, to be reviewed and approved by the borough, I'm sorry, by the board attorney, and thereafter recorded. And that the two-family use associated with the existing main structure on the site shall be abandoned, of course, in favor of the, the, the garage apartment that we approved. Uh, applicants arrange for the large trees at the site, which have branches extending into the existing wires, to be appropriately pruned in consultation with the shade tree commission. And we put in there, have that completed within 90 days from the resolution. And I think, um, uh, Mr. Chairman, I think it was your suggestion, good suggestion, that we have in here, no certificate of occupancy shall be issued for the garage apartment until such time as the conversion of the existing two-family structure to a single-family structure has been completed. And then, uh, Ted, this was going back to what I just said. The board is furthermore aware that in the driveway, or that in that the driveway will be constructed and installed with pervious pavers. The overall lot coverage may, uh, slightly change. And, um, and so we're just gonna have to note that. And that we encourage them to have a professional study to study the load capacity to make sure they're okay. Good faith efforts with the, um, underground utilities. So, Mr. Chairman, I think that was it. I know I went a little intense here, but, uh, given the nature of the discussion. And April, um, when this is, uh, everyone can comment on it, but only those members who voted in favor of the application actually get to cast votes on the resolution. And, and, Mr. Chairman, if acceptable, adopt the resolution, subject to, uh, zoning and engineering review, just so Ted can, uh, check my impervious calculations.
Of course, of course. Uh, Mr. Kennedy, excellent work in summarizing that. Appreciate that. Um, I do have a question, and, and it pertains not only to this, but other applications. We had another one where we moved a setback from, from, uh, three feet, uh, to five feet. Um, however, the drawings that they submitted showed three feet, right? Do, do they, are they required, when, when such a drastic change like that happens, to submit new drawings? Because, you know, if they turn that over to their contractor, and then the contractor puts the garage three feet off the property line instead of five, like we dictated, uh, you know, is there a need to resubmit correct plans? Because we, those plans are basically no longer valid.
Absolutely, excellent question. So, so a couple of things. Number one, the way this resolution is, is worded, and, and most of our resolutions by, by, by design at your request, is that we say the plans shall be revised so as to portray and confirm the following. So, A, they definitely have to revise the plans to show, um, those, those details. And B, on top of that, and I'll defer to Ted on this, Ted and April, um, once plans come in and people wanna get permits, as I understand it, um, there's someone who goes through the plans, and there's someone who goes through the resolution and literally checks off each thing to make sure all the appropriate conditions have been satisfied. Is that an accurate statement?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, great. So, with that, um, anything else, Mr. Kennedy, on that, uh, resolution?
That was good. If you all are okay with that.
Yep, um, I'm gonna ask everyone. Does, does anyone make a motion to approve the resolution for Almeida on 10th Avenue?
Make the motion.
Thank you, Holly.
I'll second.
Thank you, Hutch.
Okay, Mr. Malango?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Ms. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
And Ms. Drizinovich?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, great. Uh, for the new members, I'd like to just mention something because it, it applies to this application too. E- even though you, you may have, someone may have voted against it. This was a 5-2 resolution. Um, when the resolution comes up, you, even though you voted against the application, that doesn't mean you, you necessarily need to vote against the resolution. You still have the ability, I, I mean, you could agree with the resolution even though your vote was you didn't want the project to proceed. You're basically validating that, that you agree that the resolution is an accurate reflection of what we agreed on during the meeting, even if you weren't a yes vote. So, um, I just wanna make sure people were clear on that.
Oh, Kevin just said that the ones that voted no would vote on the resolution.
Oh, I apologize. Am I contradicting you, Kevin? I, I thought, um, we all would vote. It's just, it's just you're not gonna...
You know, now, you're, you're, it's, it's a weird little world in, about the, um, provisions with the resolution. So, it, it does say that technically everyone can comment on it and say, hey, I think the resolution is good, or hey, I think you need to add this, or why would you put this in? We didn't say that, take that out. So, everyone can comment on it. But as a matter of law, the way it is, is, is technically only the five people who voted on this one, the five people who voted yes, get to actually vote the resolution. I agree with what you said, but I think the law actually provides something differently.
Oh, okay.
If I could write the law, if I could write the law, I would do what you say, because I think that's better.
I think I may have previously approved resolution that I voted no, that I voted no on the vote. But that, that's okay, okay. All right, good to know. I'm, I stand corrected. All right, um, and you have another resolution, Mr. Kennedy?
We have, we have three more in the minute.
We have a lot more. Do we have to correct that? You're gonna have to speed it up, though, Kevin.
Absolutely. The other one, the, the Henning Resolution, and I, I sent this...
Hey, Kevin.
Yes.
Kevin, do we have to correct that vote, you think? Because...
No, it's fine, because the two people that voted no aren't here.
Oh, okay, my bad. All right, thank you.
Okay, good, good catch. So, the Henning Resolution is 1707, uh, Surf Avenue. It's just for renovation of the existing first floor and construction of a new second floor in a new half-story. And, um, it was an undersized lot. And the conditions of note, really, were, um, all our standard things, but good faith efforts to place electrical utilities underground, or at least have them come in from the rear. And there was also revision of the plans, uh, Mr. Chairman, to A, confirm that the entire, I deal with the entire home is to be recited. Was not an issue that not the whole home was recited?
Yeah, the, the, um, the plan showed, um, only partial siding, like halfway down. And then the lower story looked like it was just gonna be cement. But they said in the, in the meeting that, that that drawing wasn't reflective of, of how far down the siding was actually gonna go.
So, we have that. And then I think, Mr. Chairman, this is also a concern that you had, inclusion of a note confirming that the existing garage slash shed shall not be able to be internally accessed from the home. That is, that existing interior wall separating the garage and the home shall remain intact. The garage is not to be utilized as living space. Uh, they're adding additional landscaping to the property, including the placement of some trees in the front yard area. And that landscaping proposal, uh, gets to be reviewed and approved by our, our friend Ted. And, and that, um, the also, uh, inclusion of a note confirming that the extra side yard area where they're removing some of the decking and materials is gonna be replaced with grass. Um, and I think that was the gist of those. If that's acceptable, that can be adopted.
Okay, uh, no further comments, Mr. Kennedy?
No, sir.
Okay, um, so, um, I'd like a motion to approve the resolution.
So will.
I second.
Uh, Malango, uh, first motion. Dietz, uh, second.
Okay, Mr. Malango?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Ms. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Stand.
And Ms. Drizinovich?
Yes.
Next is the resolution for Allison Gerard, 120th.
And, Mr. Chairman, this was just, uh, fairly straightforward. Uh, request to enclose an existing top-floor balcony so that create additional, uh, living space. And you'll recall, we had a lot of members of the public com, um, and the conditions of note were basically just our, our real, uh, basic note, note, note-specific, uh, conditions that would be, uh, necessitate planned revisions.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna move, uh, for someone to approve it, but I am gonna, uh, not vote on this because I'm in notification zone. So, I'm not gonna vote on the resolution. Do we have a motion?
I'll make it.
And I think, uh, Ms. Dietz, second. Hutch made the motion. Ms. Dietz, second.
Okay, Mr. Malango?
Abstain. Was not at that, uh, meeting.
Okay, uh, Ms. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Stand.
Ms. Drizinovich?
Yes.
Um, and the next one is Joseph Custody, 313 14th Avenue.
And, Mr. Chairman, fairly, uh, simply, this was for demolition of the existing single-family structure and construction of a new single-family home on the site with detached garage. And the conditions of note, uh, included, um, air conditioning condensers to be located in a zoning-compliant location. Floor management runoff to be reviewed and approved by the borough engineer, comply with the borough's half-story ordinance. Um, they remember the, uh, were also including a, you know, confirming that the request for a side-yard setback variance on the west side of the property has been withdrawn. Um, and in furtherance of, uh, have the plans revised to reflect that that sideyard setback for that west side of the property shall be a compliant five feet. No variance to be amended. It was three feet, and that was one of the conditions. And then, um, there's, uh, something about the, uh, the three-foot platform approximately two feet from the property line. I have a, a clarification of that in one second. And then the driveways will be installed with pavers and grass strips. And, um, uh, inclusion of a note that we're gonna place a walkway, which might materially change the overall lot coverage. The driveway shall be ten feet, and the driveway setback shall be two feet. And, and I just, I, I had some questions. I spoke with the applicant, or emailed with the applicant's, uh, architect. And basically, um, he said that, yes, there'll likely be a concrete walkway or stepping stone. It was determined in the meeting that by moving the house and making the driveway smaller, we did not need to increase the requested 61% impervious coverage. The walkway will be made of impervious surface. And then, um, uh, the impervious coverage for the total property is not to exceed 61%. Uh, that includes all impervious surfaces, the house, the garage, driveway walkways. So, if we, uh, are acceptable of this, Mr. Chairman, we can adopt this one as amended.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Uh, and I'd like someone to make a motion for approval of the resolution.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Dietz.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson.
Hey, Mr. Malango?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Ms. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Stand.
Ms. Drizinovich?
Yes.
Okay. Um, next is the approval of minutes for the February 25th meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion. I'll ma- I, I guess I can make a motion, why not?
And a second? Anybody wanna second that?
I'll second.
Everyone's reluctant. Nice job on those minutes, by the way, April.
Uh, Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Malango?
Abstain.
Ms. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Abstain.
And Ms. Drizinovich?
Yes.
Okay. Um, if you're here, if you're the applicant or the applicant's professionals for the 1808 B Street application, please raise your hand so I could admit you as a panelist. Okay, is it just the two?
Okay, so are we, are we ready?
Sure. And, Mr. Chairman, uh, if I may, just from a procedural standpoint, I'm going to ask if there's anyone in the, uh, listening public, the remote public, who has any interest or comments or concerns regarding the sufficiency of the notice, uh, that they should raise their computer icon, or raise their, raise hand icon, or contact the board secretary at?
Erica at Belmar.com.
And what we'll do is, well, we will mark into the record, we, as a board, have before us.
All right, uh, before you do that, I do have someone asking that raised their hand.
Okay.
Let's see.
This is, uh, uh, raising hand relative to the sufficiency of notice, I assume. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, go ahead, state your name and address, please.
Uh, 1806 B Street, Joyce Rollins.
Okay, did you have a question about the notice?
Uh, we just, um, wanted more information to understand what we are talking about. We weren't, we, we weren't able to see a site plan or something, so we're just unsure what exact proposed changes are gonna be there. We saw something about 2.88 feet. We don't know.
Sure, um, yeah, they're, they're gonna give a presentation.
Okay. Well, thank you. You're welcome.
And then you're gonna, uh, good evening, ma'am. Uh, my name is Kevin. I'm the board attorney. There'll be an opportunity for you to ask questions of the witness. Uh, and then there'll be also an opportunity, the chairman will give you an opportunity later on to make comments saying you like the application or you don't like the application, or you'd like it better if X, Y, or Z. So, uh, if you would, uh, sit tight and, uh, definitely, you know, when, when asked, uh, when they open up for comments, uh, if you have questions and/or comments that, you know, follow the chairman's lead, and we'll definitely have you be heard.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. So, uh, what we'll do is we'll mark into the record, um, now, April, I have a minor land use zoning permit and I have a revised one. I guess I should just mark the revised one in, correct?
Um, sure.
Okay. Um, she said rather unconvincingly, uh, but, uh, so we're gonna say A one is the revised, uh, minor land use zoning permit. And that's, uh, dated on or about, uh, September eleventh, two thousand nineteen and September third, two thousand nineteen. So that will be A one. And A two will be the, uh, the building setback location plan is prepared by, uh, Valley Surveying and it is dated December eleventh, two thousand nineteen. And I think we have, uh, A three, which is, um, some floor plans and a zoning chart and that is prepared by Architrae and it is dated March eighteenth, two thousand twenty, I believe. And, uh, so, uh, Mr. Chairman, may I swear in Ted Bianchi?
Please.
Okay, so Ted Bianchi, good evening, you are the Boroughs Construction Official and Zoning Official. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide any, will be the truth, the best you know, so help you God?
Sure.
Okay, and then, uh, April, who, who's the applicant? Is it Lawrence De Bianchi?
Yes.
Okay, good evening, sir. If you could just, uh, state your, uh, name for the record, please, and spell your last name?
Uh, Lawrence De Bianchi, D E capital B I A N C H I.
Okay, and good evening. If you could just raise your right hand, uh, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the best you know, so help you God?
Yes.
Okay, and, uh, um, now, are we, uh, swearing in Jose Santos as well? Is Jose Santos?
Excuse me, yes, yes.
Yes, be on your team? Okay.
Yes, on screen.
Jose Santos, just state your name and your business address, please.
Jose Santos, Architrae Group, business address is one fifty-seven Broad Street, Red Bank, New Jersey.
Okay, and you're testifying tonight in your capacity as?
As the Architect of Record.
Okay, and, uh, if you could just raise your right hand, you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the best you know, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and you can give your credentials momentarily. And then just for the record, uh, Mr. De Bianchi, just before we start this, uh, we are speaking about the property at eighteen oh eight B Street, correct?
Yes.
And are you the owner of that property?
Yes.
And how long have you owned it roughly?
Uh, five years.
And my records reflect that there's a single-family home on the site?
Yes.
Okay, and do you live there?
No.
Okay, uh, is it, is it occupied or is it rented?
No, we are, uh, right now, it's our summer house and when I retire, which is soon, we're looking to make it, uh, permanent.
Okay, so thank you. So why don't you, um, however you want to handle this, you are your architect, uh, tell the board what you're looking to do and what variances you need and, and why you can't comply with those, uh?
Mr. Kennedy?
Yep.
Before you, um, before we turn it over for the, 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 the regular course of business, um, for the sake of the board as well as the audience members, I just need some clarity about a couple of things regarding the submission.
Um, also, also, we have, I think they have one more witness, too.
Okay, let's take care of the witness first and then I'll, I'll bring up my point.
Okay. Who's the other witness?
Conchetta.
Oh, Conchetta Alvarez.
Okay, and Conchetta is spelled?
C O N C E T T A.
And Alvarez is spelled?
A L V A R E Z.
Okay, and you're testifying tonight in your capacity as?
The General Contractor of Record.
Okay, if you could just raise your right hand and, um, state your, uh, business address. If you didn't do that, you do that.
Six twelve Brielle, Brielle, New Jersey, zero eight seven three zero.
Okay, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the best you know, so help you God?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, if I may, uh, and I'd like to state, uh, and I'll stand corrected, Mr. Kennedy, if, if this is, um, not right, but, um, you know, generally, the submissions that you give to us, that the applicant gives to the board and then shares with the public, should be an accurate reflection of the current state of the property as well as what the intended, um, uh, variances are seeking. The diagram that I look at, and I apologize, I don't know what, what exhibit it went in at, but it's the architectural site plan, uh, uh, drawing that was in the, um, uh, electronic package. Uh, it shows an existing garage structure that says to remain. Is, is the garage, is the plan that the garage is going to remain? Cause I heard contradictory statement that the garage was not going to remain. So could we get clarity before we begin the proceedings? So we, we understand.
Who wants, I'll, I'll respond. So, um, originally, when I was dealing with, uh, Ted, we were going back and forth on this and we added a bathroom addition on the back of the house. Um, because of that bathroom addition, the garage became an area where it was going to be over exceeding the building coverage. So, uh, we had decided that we were going to file a variance to keep the garage versus taking the garage out.
I'm sorry, I don't understand that explanation. You said you added a bathroom to the back of the house.
Yeah, there was, yes.
But, but that would cause you to not keep the garage, not, not keep the gar- like, it's, it's the opposite of what you're saying.
Right, so we had to knock, we had to remove the garage.
Right.
That's why, yeah, that's why we're filing a variance because the clients did not want to remove the garage.
Okay, all right, understood. The second point, the diagram submitted does not show that extension of the foundation line for the construction that was previously completed.
Well, it's not a hundred percent done at this point, that's why.
Yes, but the foundation is already poured and, and the structure is completed.
Yes, that is true.
It is noted on the back piece, on the site plan.
Oh, yeah, it's on there.
I'm sorry, could you show me where that is?
Let me pull up the, my.
I'm sorry, Mark, Mark over here.
Can you push share screen?
There, there's been construction completed to date and, and the, and the, and the drawing does not accurately reflect either the construction that's completed to date or even if it were in advance, it doesn't indicate what was proposed unless there's another diagram.
Thank you.
On the site plan, on the architectural site plan, indicates that the existing rear yard is at twenty-five point six seven, which is right up at,
Yes, but, but your, your, your structural footprint does not reflect the addition that you've already put on.
It, what we did is we removed an existing foundation that was back there and we replaced it with a new foundation for a bathroom.
Right, but this drawing did not.
Jose, does it depict, I, I?
And I, can we do a share screen?
Oh, thank you.
There.
Yes, that's what I'm looking at.
Yes, that little back corner of the house.
That's the bathroom.
There's a dimension locker of twenty-five point six seven, the existing rear yard, that's to that bathroom piece, that L shape.
What I'm, what I'm, what I'm saying is the house has a bump out and then it comes in and then there's another bump out. And this drawing is not reflective of that on the backside of the house. There's two additions you did to the foundation, on the north side and the south side.
There was only, uh, I'm confused, maybe I got this wrong, but there was only one addition that was added.
Yes, but, but the foundation line across the back of the house on the, on the southeast corner is not showing on this diagram. It's in fact that L shape is, is, is the northern side. The southern side is not reflecting a change to the foundation line.
Jose?
All right, listen, I'm not going to hold up, I'm not going to dwell on this, but I, I, I'm questioning the accuracy of this drawing and therefore I have, you know, I, I start out with a concern and then, uh?
Now, Mark, my assumption was what you see there, that L-shaped component, um, I thought that when Jose did this, that that was the new bathroom.
That is the new bathroom.
That is the new bathroom, Jose.
You've got something that mirrors that on the other side and so it's sort of like you have that and then I think it's the door, right? And then you have something else like that. So this isn't our, the current state is what I'm just trying to point out to the board. And before we proceed.
Um, are you talking about?
Existing screen porch in the back?
That existing screen porch was already removed.
Right, there's no screen porch there. The back of the house has, has a straight structure and then it comes in a little bit enough for a doorway and then it comes back out again.
Right.
Continues to the south side. This is not reflecting that.
I, I'm, maybe I'm confused, but that, I, I'm, Jose, do you get it? Because I'm kind of confused right now. Because those lines that are on the left side is depicting the, that's on the driveway side, that is depicting the new bathroom.
Correct, that's the L shape that's.
There's nothing else, yeah, there's nothing else back there. That's the only thing that was added was that corner piece.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would agree with you, this plan does not reflect what's in place there at the current time.
Mr. Malango, did you visit the site?
I did, sir.
And so did I. And so we have two board members who have questions about this drawing. Um, and I will also say, and, you know, forgive me, and I'm not trying to be difficult here because.
Oh, no, 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 I understand.
We definitely want to support your application, but I have to explain why it's so important. I don't see dimensions on here. Like typically, we would see what's the size of that bathroom? What's the size of the left-hand side of the house? What's the width of the house, right? There, the, we, we have, this drawing is significantly lacking for us to be in a situation to be able to do what you're asking us to do.
Right.
You want to help, but, but this drawing is poor.
I think the focus was on the, the front existing porch to replace the damaged, unsafe existing porch with a new porch and to keep the garage, that I think the focus was on that, that, um, Jose did not take into consideration about the bathroom.
All of the variances need, need, need to be accurately reflected on here, not just the front porch.
Right, and I, I understand that, Mark.
So, so, Mr. Kennedy, I, 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 I'm not really sure where to proceed with this because I, 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 I mean, I think we could continue, but I, I just think it's difficult for us to.
Bathroom's not part of their application.
In its entirety. Um, I believe there's some rear yard setback issues, though.
No, there's not. That was confirmed with, uh, Ted and myself. When it comes to that bathroom, there was no rear setback issues whatsoever, nor were there left-side setbacks issues at all. Or right side, there's nothing left, rear, or right that, um, caused any issues with setbacks for the bathroom.
Well, I believe clearance to the garage is an issue when you don't have, um, um, uh, the, the, the dimensions and the clearances. So I'll just defer and I'll, I'll, I'll accept what you just said as accurate, assuming that Ted agrees with it. But I will say that the, um, lack of, of measurements and dimensions being reflected here severely impact our ability to make a good decision, including the front porch fill-in that, that you're showing here, uh, does not give us any dimensions whatsoever of the width or depth of the, of the, um, of, of what is you're asking us to approve.
Jose, was the architectural prints submitted at all or was it just this site plan?
Just the architectural site plan was submitted.
So the prints itself were not submitted?
Correct.
Okay, so the prints should have been.
Nor, nor were they prepared yet.
Uh-huh, uh-huh, okay. Well, then that, that's a big thing right there because we need the, like Mark said, we need to make sure we're conforming with the measurements and so on. I mean, I know it's replacing and it's not any larger, we're not making it larger. It's the same exact footprint, but Mark does have a point that there's no measurements on this site plan.
Thank you, Conchetta, and, 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 you know, again, I'm trying to be helpful here, but like, we don't even know this, this diagonally, this diagonally shaded in area. Like typically, we would see the, the floor plan of the first floor and understand, is this going to be a standalone room? Or is this going to extend a room that currently exists? And you're going to knock down the front, like, like, we, we.
Yes.
No appreciation of an existing bedroom.
I appreciate you telling me that, but.
But it's not on there. That's what, Jose, that's what Mark is saying is the details that they need to analyze so that they can make an educated decision is lacking from the site plan that there should have been. Even if you decided just to do a site plan, a little bit more detail could have been placed where behind that, uh, diagonal line, you could have put existing bedroom and then extending the existing bedroom and also putting the dimensions for the existing porch and the same footprint. So I totally respect what Mark is saying about the lack of measurements on the site plan. Even if the prints weren't done, at least the measurement should have been done, like on the bathroom, the feet from the garage to the bathroom, um, the feet from the garage back to the back end, the dimensions of the garage, I'm not even sure if that's even on there. And of course, the porch dimensions are not fully, uh, depicted on here either. So I, I understand again, where you're all coming from.
Also, again, as advi- as advice more than anything else, you know, typically, we see elevations that would show us what the intended finished product going to look like so we could, we could take that as positive criteria that it's going to enhance the, you know, the, 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 and improve what's currently there.
Right.
That we could give you some credit for some positive criteria, but without having elevations, you know, for all we know, you might just be putting up four sheets of plywood around the porch and calling it a room extension. So, so, you know, we have to have a better, um, idea. So you guys need to decide, um, where you want to go with this at this stage. And I'm sorry to cut this off at the beginning, but, but typically, our applications have a lot more and, uh, higher quality, um, information to share with us that we can make a better decision.
Totally understand, Mark. All right, so then, at this point, from what I'm gathering, what you're saying, Mark, like, it's not even worth it to put it to a vote because we do need that final.
I, I, I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I, I have, I have to leave it in your, your discretion as to whether or not you want to proceed or maybe make some corrections and come back. It's not our call, um, but I could tell you.
Right, but I, I mean.
It'd be a big challenge for us.
Right.
Without having that information, um, so the probability of getting ETS is going to be more difficult.
Yeah, I think we need clear line information. I need, uh, the actual drawings with the elevations for both sides, uh, clear information on the measurements on the back of what was already constructed and what's existing. So in my opinion, Larry, uh, I'm going to suggest that we don't go to a vote because they are, they really do need extra information on these drawings. How do you feel about that, Larry?
You know what, let me, let me, this is Kevin, the Board Attorney. Let me, let me just say one, a couple of quick things. Again, subject to what, uh, you all feel and, and what the board members feel. But obviously, there's, um, variance relief that's necessary and it's at a high standard. And I think that there's going to be a concern that if there's not sufficient, uh, information presented, uh, and I don't want to do anything that's going to compromise the board's vote or the board's determination and I don't want to do anything to, to compromise your presentation. And again, uh, Mr. De Bianchi, I am, uh, everyone on the board is extremely sensitive to the, the timing issues and, and, uh, how long it takes to get on the agenda. But I would respectfully submit, again, uh, just overstepping my bounds, that, uh, probably doesn't advance your, uh, long-term or short-term interests to have, uh, too much of a discussion tonight on, on plans that, A, are, are the details of which are not there. Um, so I'm assuming, uh, Mr., I mean, again, it's going to be your, your, your call. Uh, I would respectfully encourage you to maybe, you know, uh, have some plan revisions made and then, uh, just so that it'll make hopefully the next presentation easier. And if you adjourn it, uh, we'll give you a date certain tonight and you will not have to renotice unless your plan revisions show that, you know, you need additional variances. But assuming no additional relief is necessary, uh, you would not have to renotice again. So that's what I'm hearing, Mr. Chairman. I don't want to overstep my bounds, but if, if there's, or if plans are lacking, I don't necessarily know that the board can legally, um, or with good faith, approve our application. So I'm not trying to, uh, like I said, I just want to ma- maximize your time and efficiency.
No, I understand. I, I, again, I'm, I'm leaving up to the applicants to decide.
Well, I think it's an injustice to.
Hold on, uh, it looks like Ted, Ted would like to speak.
Oh, I did.
I, I have, I have a couple of questions. Is there anything different about the gravel area in the back? That's still the same?
I believe the gravel area has not been touched, but we pulled up the, uh, flagstone that was with the screen porch, like everything was pulled up.
And how about the screen porch? Is that the same?
That's all removed.
That's removed?
Yes, that's been removed.
Uh, so it's not there part of the structure anymore?
It's no longer on the structure now, it's been removed.
So the decky, everything is gone?
Everything's gone.
Okay.
But I'm pretty sure, Larry, the gravel is still back there, correct?
Yes, everything is still back there. Nothing was touched beyond the end of that screen porch where it ended. Nothing goes back for touch.
Yeah, the screen porch was removed, all I was removed, but the gravel section is still there.
Uh, yeah, my concern was that there's no new construction going on on that side of the house, other than the front.
Oh, no, none.
None, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Ted, sorry.
But there has been some, Ted. I, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm hearing that that was already permitted work and no variances were needed to, to.
Well, the only permitted work was the, uh, the work done on the other side of the house. The screen porch is in the setback. You can't do anything for that.
No, I'm talking about the backside of the house, not the front.
Well, the backside, there's a twenty-five foot setback and I think the bathroom that they, that they put in is twenty-five feet. Am I correct?
Right, correct.
That's not in the, that's not in the rear yard setback.
Okay.
So that's conforming, so they can do that.
Understood, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question before we close out.
Uh, Mr. Malango, I'll, I'll recognize you in just a second, um, and I would ask, um, that you please post your permits so they're visible from the street. That is a requirement. I didn't see any permits posted on the building for the work that's under.
Well, I'll double, I'll double check it tomorrow, Mark.
All right, please, okay.
It should be, it should have been on the front window, but who knows? But that's where I left it last.
Well, it, it, it lets, it lets the neighbors know that.
Yes.
It's permitted work and that it wouldn't get questioned. I, I, I suspect that there may be some members of the public that want to speak on the application. If we're adjourning, it's probably going to have to wait until next time, but if that's true, um, you know, that, that they have a right to know that the work that you have inducted to date was done under a valid permit. Uh, Mr. Malango, if you could, go ahead.
Yes, I have a couple of questions for Conchetta. The, on the right side, standing in the rear, oh, you're looking at the so-called bathroom addition. On the right side, there is a piece of the building that's been projected to, appears to extend the kitchen. It's a, it's a cantilever?
Oh, I know what you're pointing out. That is the, the window. That is the window which was, um, I have to double check, I don't have that paperwork in front of me, but I thought that was part of the permit process was we were replacing the existing windows that were out there.
Okay, well, look, the window that's there, it looks like a walk-in box window.
Yeah, so originally, yeah, originally, the way it was designed, it, the way it was, I should say, uh, protruding out, um, was not done properly. So what we did is we boxed it out after we took out the old windows. That's when we realized that there was an issue with the existing structure. So we restructured it where we made it larger, okay, so that, um, it could cantilever the way it should have been cantilever, not the way it was done before.
Okay, but that cantilever appears to be less than a twenty-five foot setback. It's longer than the bathroom addition.
I don't believe so, but I could double check that tomorrow morning. I'll go measure it out. But I believe it was lined up, but I'll double check.
Okay, let.
It's gonna, it's gonna take a surveyor to, to find out the exact measurement. You just came by a ruler. I need it, I need it done by a surveyor or an architect professional.
Okay.
To tell me exactly where that cantilever is at.
Okay.
Back, you're gonna have to take it down or get a variance.
All right, I will double check that, but I, again, I don't have the paperwork. I thought that was part of the first paperwork. Well, no, really was replacing the windows, not rebuilding it. So I'm pretty sure that's what the paperwork stated, that we were rebuilding it, but then we found out that it was all rotted, which we showed Larry all the pictures that the whole structure. which we showed Larry all the pictures that the whole structure was rotted. And it had to be replaced. And it could not be replaced in the same condition, like at all. Um, so I will double check that. I'll call up Valley Survey and have them come out. I mean, I have the transient too, that I could check it, but you're right, the survey should be the one to validate it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Last question?
Yes, go ahead, Mike.
The addition that you're putting for the back bathroom triggered a variance to take down the garage, correct?
Um, Ted, do you recall if it was the bathroom or was it because of the front porch with the garage? Cause I can't recall that. I don't think it was the back.
The, the front porch is in the setback. That was an issue. That was a variance.
Okay.
So the garage didn't move, correct?
No, the garage is still as is in the same location.
Okay, that's, and that's a detached garage or is it?
Detached garage.
Detached. All right, and the bathroom isn't within the setback, right?
No.
Okay, but the original, but I, I'm a little confused and maybe if you get better drawings, it'll, it'll make it easier for next time. But the, what was the reason that the garage had to be demolished initially? Um, and I, I don't understand, I mean
I, I believe, it wasn't that it had to be demolished, it had to be shrunk down.
Right.
And I think it's cause it was a non-conforming lock for the, the minute that we touched the front porch, we had to make it a conforming lock. And I believe that's where it all started was we were gonna eliminate the front porch to rebuild it, but the setback was an issue on the right side. We were not gonna go any further. We were, we were keeping it the same footprint. But because we were eliminating the porch and rebuilding it, that's what created the garage to be flat. And Ted, I might be wrong, cause I haven't looked at this in a while, but I'm pretty sure that's why it was flat because at that point, it was considered non-conforming and we had to abide by the new rulings if we take, took out the porch.
Okay, so let's just, let's just, let's just recap and then, and then, and then you guys could decide whether, and it seems like you're leaning towards wanting to, um, come back and try to do this correctly with the right information. But so, um, if, if you get a survey done with the right at current structure and clearances and dimensions, um, given that some permitted work has been conducted to date, right, and that would include the, the current lock coverage with the garage. Okay, so we could get a, 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 a pervious, uh, percentage, uh, in the impervious percentage and then determine whether or not or how much of a, a variance you're looking for, for lock coverage. And then, um, the, the addition that you're trying to do on the front porch, we need to see that first floor layout that would include what that room is gonna look like and what the size and dimensions and access and where the windows are gonna be and whatnot. And then you would need an elevation, um, that you would see what the completed product's gonna look like from a front view as well as a view, um, looking north.
Right.
But where, so you could see that entire southern side of the house, what it's gonna look like. And then if there's an intention to either reside it or re-roof or new gutters or whatever it is,
Yes.
you know, all, all those are positive criteria. And if you're gonna do that work, it would help your case to indicate the additional improvements that you're gonna do rather than just closing that porch. And if we could see that, it lets us get to yes, right?
Okay, perfect.
If we can't see it, we, we can't, we can't, we can't make a decision.
Yeah, it all started that the existing front porch structure is just unsafe. It shouldn't, you know, like it has to be redone. That's where it all stemmed from.
Right, and you'd have no issue if you just rebuilt the porch and made it safe.
Right.
You're allowed to do that without any question, but you're not wanting to do that.
No, cause what we wanna do
Ending inside living area. I, I understand. But the, the unsafe
Because they're moving down there, they're gonna be moving down there when they retire.
I understand, but the unsafe condition could be remedied simply by fixing it. It, it, it isn't a reason to enclose it.
No, I, that's totally understandable. So that's why we're applying for the variance because they do wanna make it a larger than that.
Okay, all right. All right, um, so, uh, do you guys need to speak to another or, or?
No, I think, I, I, listen, I've done so many of these meetings throughout, you know, Ocean and Monmouth County. Larry, in my opinion, I think we have to follow suit on a journey, uh, to another meeting date. Jose is gonna do his updated drawings, so we have, uh, really concise drawings to provide to the board so they can make an educated decision based on the information. Also, I'm gonna call up Valley Survey and uh, call them up tomorrow to see about getting an updated survey for the back area because of that, um, damaged window area. Okay, um, how do you, Larry, are you okay with that?
But sitting here and not saying nothing. This has started in 2019.
Right.
All right, I, you know, just to get this meeting took two years. All right, I don't understand, you know, maybe it's
Well, I wasn't involved, I wasn't involved in the first phase. That was somebody else, but, uh, so they're gonna give us, am I correct? I think Mark or Kevin
How, how much longer is this gonna take?
Well, they're gonna provide a date, I believe, today. Is that correct?
Okay. We will, uh, uh, here's what, here's what I will say. We will attempt to accommodate you in that, um, you won't have to renotice, but your revised documents that show what we asked for, the, the, the survey, the dimensions and the elevations. And, you know, I, I apologize, Mr. Bianchi, if you're not familiar with what the fire could do this kind of, of construction, but, but thi- this is typical of what, what gets done in any town. This is not unique to Belmore. Um, so not to have to renotice would save you some time and effort, but you are gonna have to make those drawings available to the members of the public with sufficient time that they could see them prior to the meeting and it can't be the same afternoon as the next meeting. So April, when would be the next slot if, if these guys are gonna adjourn tonight?
So the drawings have to be to meet at a minimum 10 days before the meeting.
And when will be the next one, April?
It would be April 22nd.
Okay, so Jose, I need that way before that. Like next week.
Not a problem.
Just like I'm
If we don't renotice, how will the people in the circle come and see the new plans?
We're gonna be advising that this evening about the, the, um, rescheduling
What if everyone's not here?
I, I, I'm gonna agree, I'm not, I'm not sure who just said that, but I'd rather put the renotice in the newspaper. I think that we should do that.
I agree.
Yeah, because not everybody's on this meeting tonight and, you know, so I think it's important that the public is aware that we're gonna redo, do this meeting.
And Conchita, this is Kevin, the board attorney. If you want, when you're, uh, have your notice, uh, done, shoot it, shoot it down to, uh, myself and April and we'll take a look at it and we'll just all be on the same page.
Okay.
Conchita, I wasn't referring to, to the newspaper. I mean, typically, the renotice requires resending all the registered mails to the 200
Oh, okay, I apologize.
And I was attempting to try to, um, give a, give a, um, some relief on that, um, both time and effort and cost. Um, and so I still stand with that, um, unless there's an objection by any board, by board members, Mr. Malongo inclusive, um, that we're trying to help you here. Uh, but it would, you know, be necessary that any member of the public, uh, who's here, uh, recognize, they're not gonna be told another time. You can run it in the newspaper, sure. Uh, but the most important thing is if they wanna see the revised drawings, that they'll be available April after, uh, or they'll be available 10 days, uh, April, April 15th, I would assume, right?
And they'll also be posted on the website with the agenda.
Right, so, so any member of the, assuming, um, you know, I should probably go to a vote. Um, I'm, I feel like I'm making some decisions here that I should defer to my counterparts. Uh, is, 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 is the board okay, um, without requiring, um, you know, a, a full renotice?
Yes.
I'm not.
We have a no?
Uh, I'm good with it. I, I feel like we don't make people renotice for much greater changes and, and applications than this. So that's my opinion.
All right, Chuck.
I'm okay with it.
Chuck, Holly.
Sorry, yes, I'm okay.
Okay, I'm, I'm also okay with not requiring, uh, renotice. Um, um, I, I would, I wouldn't be in favor of you posting in a newspaper and, uh, as April indicated, it would be on the website. I would advise any members of the public that are here tonight for this application, please pass that word on to your friends and neighbors who might not have been here tonight. My assumption is they thought it was gonna get voted on tonight. So if they had an interest, they would have been on this call. And if they weren't, um, it would have been voted on. So they wouldn't have known. So I don't see a reason to do the 200 radius a second time.
Okay.
So, so with that, um, Mr. Kenny, are, are you okay with taking this over at this point on where?
Sure, absolutely. So it sounds like we're going to adjourn this to April 22nd, 2021, April 6 o'clock PM, um, and Zoom, correct?
Correct.
Uh, without the need for any further public notice. And the only thing I would just add, and Mr. Chairman, out of an abundance of caution, if the further planned, uh, details and revisions reveal the need for additional material relief, then we may have to have renotice. But let's assume that doesn't occur. So Conchita, you and I, and, and April will, will speak. But does it uh, adjourn to April 22nd, 2021, 6 o'clock PM, Zoom, uh, meeting without the need for any further public notice? So, uh, Mr. Di Bianchi, uh, as is standard, we need to ask you, do you consent to extend the timeframe within which the board has to act on the matter?
Yes.
Thank you very much. So, Mr. Chairman, I guess just, uh, and again, you very eloquently stated it's the public, uh, that, uh, be, be, be aware of this. So just for the record, we should probably just have a, a motion to adjourn this to April 22nd, 2021.
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
I'll say
Okay, thank you, Mr. Malongo.
All in favor?
I
Who would oppose? Okay.
Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Thank you, everyone.
We'll make sure on April 22nd, this is gonna be solid. Bye, Ted. Bye, April. I talk to April all the time. Poor girl. I, I bother her so much, I'm sorry, April. Okay, you guys have a good night.
We'll thank you, Conchita.
And just for the record, uh, I believe Mr. Lisco and Mr. Gregor here now.
That's right. Hello, everybody.
How you doing?
I would, I would love to hand a virtual gavel over to you, Mr. Lisco.
I thought you could do a great job, Mark.
All right, let me get the other team up. All right, so the next application would be for 1715 Ocean Avenue, the Verizon application. Can the applicants raise their hand and their professionals? We got a lot of them. All right.
April, why the applicants coming forward? Uh, Mr. Gray was asking if he's eligible to hear this application. Did they, did they present in their first meeting? Is that right? You're
I wasn't here
They did give a presentation.
I didn't hear that, so I didn't, I, I missed that. So I
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, hi, Chairman, and hi, Phil. Uh, this is Kevin. Uh, so the, April, my notes are that, uh, we, uh, the first presentation was November 19th, 2020. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, uh, uh, Mr. Gray, if you were not here for that, uh, you are certainly, uh, willing to stay, I mean, able to stay tonight and to participate, uh, and ask questions and make comments. But if there is an ultimate vote tonight, uh, respectfully, you would not be able to, to, to vote.
I understand.
Okay, and, uh, just for the record too, Ms. Dietz was not a member at the time, but she did watch the recording of the meeting and signed a form certifying then.
Awesome.
Excellent, thank you, Ms. Dietz.
Yes, thank you. I was not a member at that time either. I did not watch the video of it.
Okay, so that would be the same thing, um, Anne Marie with, with, uh, Phil. You can make, uh, comments tonight and watch and participate and give opinions. It's just if a, a vote is taken tonight, you would not, uh, be able to vote. And again, the, uh, further concept is if this is carried, I don't know what it's going to be, uh, and if it is carried and you wanted to, you all could listen, um, and, uh, and, and participate and vote at the, at the next, at the next meeting when the vote takes place. Um, Mr. Chairman, can I just do a couple of procedural things?
Of course.
Okay, so first up, I guess, uh, just to, uh, officially mark it to the record will mark as, uh, B1 is that certification, uh, from Ms. Dietz that she, uh, reviewed the transcripts or listened to the meeting or zoomed into the meeting. Uh, thank you very much. That's always not the, the most fun thing to do and the easiest thing to do, so, so, but it's important, so thank you. And just, April, just so I know, for, um, counting purposes, there's too many people on the screen for me to count, uh, under pressure. Uh, how many eligible voting members do we have tonight?
We have six.
Okay, so that's going, uh, recall, um, uh, Mr. Chairman, that this is a use variance application and they need five affirmative yes votes. It's one of the weird, uh, or, uh, unusual provisions of New Jersey law. When we need a use variance, you need five affirmative yes votes. So many times, uh, people are not, applicants are not real excited about, um, proceeding with less than a complement of, of seven voting board members. So is, is Rich DeLucre on the line?
Uh, this is Mike Webster. Uh, he was having IT issues. He is on a phone, he is not on Zoom. So if you could unmute his cell phone, I can give you that number.
Sure, I'm saying sure, but I have to defer that to April, cause I have no idea what I'm talking about.
Yep, that's fine. I only see one phone number, so I'm assuming that's him.
And 7606?
Hmm, no. That is not him.
That's the number I was given to ask for.
Yeah, that, that number comes over as the number you have, April, it's 609-344-3161.
Let's see.
Good evening. Oh, I feel unmuted, am I?
Yes.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, for the record, this is Rick DeLucre of Cooper Levenson, representing the applicant. Uh, I wanna thank you for your indulgence. As Mr. Webster indicated, I am having some IT issues that prevent me right now from joining the Zoom. Um, they're still working on them, so that may change. Um, but with that said, I understand, um, and I, I heard that, uh, the exhibit, uh, the certification has been marked and that's fine. And I understand also that we have six potential voting members tonight rather than seven.
Correct.
My inclination is, even though, as Mr. Kennedy indicated, this is something that we're normally leery of, that I believe we do want to go forward tonight because we have external time pressures for this particular project, given that it's something that would need, if it got approved, there would be a period of time for the bill down and we would need to get all of that done before the summer season.
Okay.
We'll proceed. And thank you, Rich. And, Mr. Chairman, if I could just add a few more things into the record just to give a complete flavor of where we were, how we left it, and where we are now. So you will recall at the, and Rich will hear the attorney for Verizon will give a much more thorough presentation. But you'll recall that, I think at the end of the last meeting, there was a discussion that there was maybe some discussions or negotiations between the applicant and the Borough with regard to a separate DAS-type of procedure on Ocean Avenue dealing with some Verizon-related issues. Rich will explain that momentarily. But just for the record, I'm going to mark in a letter that I sent. April, I think we're up to A10. It's a letter I sent to Mr. Delucri, and it's dated December 28, 2020. And it just basically recites that, you know, the meeting was adjourned so that additional information could be obtained relative to the status of the arrangement for the placement of certain antennas and poles along the Ocean Avenue right-of-way. Again, that is not this aspect, the Mama Luke's project. And basically, we had said in my letter, it would appear that the proposed Ocean Avenue pole placement project, you know, we would need some information. And so I asked just for some specific information. And I said, based upon my conversation with Borough officials, that may I respectfully suggest that you submit some type of expert report to address some of these issues so that the board members can further understand it. So that was my letter, and we marked that as A10. And then in response, Mr. Delucri did submit, and we'll mark as A11. It is a New York SMSA Limited Partnership doing business at Verizon Wireless. And it's an analysis and report. And it was last revised January 14, 2021, or is prepared January 14, 2021. So, Rich, that's what we're going to mark as A11. That's the most, that's the report that you submitted, correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, at that, I guess, if you and the board are so inclined, we turn it over to the attorney.
Take it away, Mr. Delucri.
Thank you very much. And although you cannot see me tonight, be assured, I am wearing a suit and tie out of respect. If you would indulge me at the start for a minute or two, I think it will help things move smoothly, or perhaps more smoothly, as we go through our presentation, through our expert witnesses. Because it's been about, I guess, close to four months since we were before the board. It wouldn't hurt, I don't think, to have a refresher of where we got to at the last session in November and which questions were left open for us to respond to. In addition to, and I'll touch on this, the one that Mr. Kennedy alluded to about the SINC filed application for a distributed antenna or DAS, DAS system along the boardwalk. At the November hearing, we essentially put on our entire case. We had three expert witnesses. We had a radio frequency expert from VCOM Engineering, Michael Webster. He's here again tonight to prevent some follow-up testimony. We had Colleen Connolly of the Share Design Group. They are the engineers, site engineers, civil engineers who designed the project. She is also here again tonight. We have Tim Kronk, a professional planner from TK Design Associates, who addressed the rationale supporting the relief that we need on this project, which parenthetically is a use variance because wireless facilities aren't permitted in this zone, a D6 variance for a height, a maximum height of 43 feet where 35 feet is permitted in the zone, a C variance for a 19-foot front setback where 20 feet is required, and a design waiver because the proposed sense at the, around the at-grade equipment compound does not have a no-climbing feature. And also, of course, minor site plan approval. Tonight, we have a fourth witness as well, specifically to address some of the questions that the board members had brought up back in November. And that is Joe Oates of Selective Wireless, and he is a site acquisition specialist. Basically, they are the people that help find a place to place facilities once the client has identified a service need in a particular area. The questions that the board had generally fell into a couple of categories. And I'm sure the board members who were there will recall this. There were some questions about the availability or suitability of alternative sites for the facilities that we're proposing for Mama Luke's. And specifically, there were questions about whether or not we had looked at the couple of sites that the ordinance would allow these type of facilities, as well as a couple of other sites, a few of them down in Spring Lake, and more generally, other potential sites in the area that we had identified as our, what we call a search area, which is the area generally where you know, within which you need to have your facilities located, given the identified need. So Mr. Oates is going to talk about that, and Mr. Webster will touch on that as well. There were other questions relating to what I would describe as the amenability of this particular building to potential co-location. Co-location, of course, is the, you know, if one applicant or if one wireless facility is approved on a site, then in theory, if another carrier, another user wants to place their antennas and equipment on that same property, they become a co-locator. And the law governing co-location, and it's mostly, I'm sorry, federal law, has particular standards governing when a proposed co-location is or isn't going to be entitled to an approval. So one of the questions that had come up before was whether this particular building was one which might, in theory, and I say in theory because, to our knowledge, no one at this point is proposing a second wireless installation in this building. We're the only ones. But whether or not this particular building is one that might be usable for co-location. And there was another question, which I would call building-related, having to do with confirmation that the building structurally can handle the equipment we're proposing to put on it. Ms. Connolly will, actually testified, I believe, at the last session, that it will handle it. She'll reiterate that tonight. And we've already agreed that we would provide written confirmation of that as a condition of approval, you know, should the board see fit to approve the application. The third witness with the, or the third area, I should say, has to do with the, generally speaking, the DAS system. At the time we were before the board, it was known that an application was pending, not in the sense that it had been presented and was being reviewed, had not yet been filed with the Borough. But we knew that it was coming. And as it turns out, I think somewhere in probably mid-January, it did get filed. And that's being handled by someone other attorneys, other than the attorneys in my office, and principals of Verizon, other than the ones who are directly involved in this application. But we stayed in touch with those other people. And, you know, we can give an update of where that process seems to stand, which is that as of yesterday, I was advised by the attorney who's handling it that there has been an open continuing exchange between the Borough and the representatives for Verizon. And that there had been some plan changes and questions presented which resulted in some further follow-up information. And they were, they are attempting to set up another meeting. They tried to do that last week, apparently, but couldn't because someone was on vacation. So I would expect that to happen sooner rather than later. Mike Webster, our radio frequency engineer, will talk tonight, though, about the, I guess, the bigger picture, the macro picture, of how the Mama Luke's site and the DAS system are intended to be complementary or end or synergistic systems. And that whatever happens with the DAS system, or, you know, whenever that happens, that Mama Luke's is still something that is needed as part of the overall service plan for Belmar. And Michael will talk about that. And he'll also touch on the unsuitability of a couple of locations, specifically the two locations, the municipal locations down in Spring Lake, the Bath and Tennis Club, and there's a municipal pavilion of some kind, why they were looked at, but they're not really suitable to address the identified service need here. So with that, which took, I admit, more than a couple of minutes, we would propose tonight to present what I expect would be very brief testimony from in order Joe Oates, Colleen Connolly, Michael Webster, and then finally, Tim Kronk, who will act tonight, as he did at the last meeting, to summarize, based on the evidence that has been, or by that point, will have come into the record, to analyze the suitability of the site for the relief that we've asked. Thank you for your indulgence on that. If there are no questions, then I would ask that Mr. Oates be sworn in, and we'll ask him a few questions.
Thanks. Kennedy, will you swear, man?
Sure. All right. Mr. Frank, do you state your first and last name and business address?
Sure. It's actually Joe Otis, O-A-T-E-S. Select Wireless. Address is 361 South Arusa Drive, Neptune, New Jersey.
Okay. And you're testifying tonight in your capacity as?
Site acquisition specialist.
Site acquisition specialist, okay. If you could raise your right hand, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide would be the truth, to the best of your knowledge, to help you guide?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Otis, and I apologize for mispronouncing your name. Because you can't see me, you won't be able to get the normal visual cues about when I've finished asking a question or when I want to move to a next question. So, you know, we'll move a little more carefully through that. As you just identified, you are, in fact, a site acquisition specialist. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
And you probably heard in my introduction, I described generally the role of the site acquisition specialist as the person who tries to find a site within an area that's been identified by the client. Is that accurate?
Yes.
All right. Now, in this case, in order to ultimately end up at the Mama Luke's site, there was initially a very thorough search done within the target area. Is that right?
Correct.
And you do that and did that in conjunction with the representatives of Verizon who understood what was the particular service need that they were trying to satisfy.
Yes, sir.
All right. Now, I don't know if you were on the last Zoom call in November, but whether you were or you weren't, I'll represent to you that, as I did in my opening. Board members had identified a number of potential sites that they wanted us to, you know, offer some information about whether or not we looked at them, and if we did, were they suitable or unsuitable and why. So what I'd like to do is I'll run through these. And if you could, with respect to each, just tell me, is it a site that you looked at, you in your professional capacity for this application? And if you did, was there, you know, a determination made why that site was not usable for this particular service need? All right. Now, the first is one of the sites, which is, I specifically identified, as a permissible site under the Borough ordinance. And that is the Public Works Yard at 13th and West Railroad. Was that a site you considered or looked at?
No, it was outside the area.
Okay. So when you say you didn't look at it because, since the first hearing, we specifically went back and examined a few of the places that the board members had mentioned, you have since the November hearing considered that location, right?
Yes, I have.
Okay. And your conclusion is it's too far inland to serve the service need?
Yes, sir.
Okay. A second site, or area, I should say, that the ordinance would permit is the area in the TB District east of the 100 block between 10th and 11th. Is that a site that, after the November meeting, was looked at?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, Rich, I'm sorry. What's that address?
Oh, I'm sorry. On east of the 100 block between 10th and 11th.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Otis, that is, I think you answered that that was a site that was looked at. And what were the conclusions about the suitability or not of that site?
It was too close to the existing Belmar II site.
Okay, so that's an existing operational Verizon Wireless site?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Question was asked about whether or not there was other publicly-owned property within our search area which might be suitable. After the November hearing, did you, in conjunction with my office and others, undertake to do an inventory of all the publicly-owned property within that area?
Yes, sir.
And did you find that there were any municipally-owned properties in that area?
There was one that I found.
Okay. Would that be the site by Lake Como on 101 North Boulevard?
Yes.
And am I right that on that site, there are no existing structures on which Verizon Wireless could have placed its antennas?
That's correct.
And is that also a site that's on Delmar's Green Acres inventory, which would preclude it from development anyway?
It is.
Okay. Next was a site down in Spring Lake, The Breakers. Was that looked at?
Yes, it was.
And that building has a relatively greater height than any of the buildings along Ocean Avenue and Belmar, doesn't it?
It does.
Okay. What was the result of the investigation into the suitability of The Breakers?
The building was not available.
Okay. Not available because the owner was not interested in allowing the antennas to be placed there?
Correct.
Okay. And finally, I had mentioned two other sites in Spring Lake, the Bath and Tennis Club and the Municipal Pavilion. And we'll ask Mr. Webster to opine on this later. But is your understanding that neither of those sites would work for the RF or radio frequency needs of this project?
Yes, sir.
And is that because the buildings themselves just aren't tall enough and they're too far south?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. I don't have anything else for Mr. Otis at this point.
Thanks, Mr. Delucri. We'll hold all our questions till the end, if that's okay with you.
Oh, that's fine. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Otis.
Thank you.
My second witness is Colleen Connolly of Share Design. She was, of course, sworn at the November meeting. But as Mr. Kennedy noted in a conversation earlier, we probably should re-swear everyone because we're with a new board and a new year.
All right, very good. Ms. Connolly, just state your name and business address.
My name is Colleen Connolly. And my address is 53 Frontage Road, Suite 260. And that's in Hampton, New Jersey, 08827.
Thank you. And do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide would be the truth, to the best of your knowledge, to help you guide?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And, Mr. Chairman, as Rich had just indicated, just because it's a new year, I thought maybe we just swear in again. But unless you all feel, I feel no legal need to have Ms. Connolly recycle qualifications and licenses, we already did that, unless you or the new board members have any specific concerns.
Thanks, Mr. Kennedy. We'll take that recommendation and not need to swear anybody, not need to go through credentials again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Ms. Connolly, in my introduction, I'm sure you heard that I pointed to two matters that we're going to talk about tonight in your testimony. One being the structural capacity of this building to handle our equipment, and the second being the characteristics of the building which may make it more or less suitable for future co-location if our project was approved and developed. With regard to the first of those, and I believe you did testify to this effect back in November, but if not, let's put it on the record now. Have you, when I say you, I mean, if not you personally, then Share Design Group, made an analysis of the structural capacity of the Mama Luke's building to handle the equipment that we are proposing to place on it?
Yes, we have. We've done a structural analysis of the building, and we do have a report pulled together for that. And we did find that the building is capable of supporting Verizon's installation as it's shown here on the plans.
All right, thank you. And we will, of course, agree to provide that report to the board's professionals for their review and approval as a condition of any approval of this application, right?
Yes, certainly.
Oh, thank you. All right. On the second issue about co-location, and I'll preface this question by saying, I won't ask you to reach any legal conclusions, but rather just to talk about the physical characteristics of the building, which may come into play in light of what are the legal standards for co-locating. And specifically, we're going to touch on the, which I will represent to the board, are the applicable legal, two of the applicable legal standards, which are that a co-locator on a building such as this, their facilities cannot extend more than six feet from the surface of the building. And the second one is that any co-location is obliged to at least match the stealthing, stealthing being the concealment, aspects of any wireless facilities which are already on that building. So with that, and if I could suggest, although I will not be able to say it, do you have the ability to share your screen and perhaps to show one or two of the? the ability to share your screen and perhaps to show one or two of the photo sims? Because I think they're really helpful in understanding the kind of unique design of this building and the impacts that might have on its suitability for co-location.
Okay, yes. I did share my screen, so I think that that should be visible now. And just for your benefit, Rich, we are looking at just an elevation view of the building.
Okay. I was picturing that in my mind, anyway. Let's look at the location of our proposed facilities. Am I right that our proposed antennas are at the frontmost and the highest point of the building?
Rich, do I need to enter this picture or it's already been submitted?
I believe it's already been marked, or it's a portion of. Well, actually, let me take that back. I'm not sure. If we're not looking at the photo sims, but are we looking at one of the elevations from the plan set?
I am showing the photo sims that Tim testified to at the last meeting.
Correct. And could you tell me which number we're looking at? They're numbered in the upper right, I think.
Right now, I have a 4C.
4C, okay, thank you. Okay. With reference to that, it appears that we are proposing to occupy the highest point on the building, is that right?
Yes, we are. Verizon's antennas are at the top of this existing bulkhead, which is in the front of the building. This is the highest point. This is 36 feet to the top of the bulkhead, and Verizon's antennas are extended above that at 43 feet to the top.
All right, can you just say those numbers again?
36 feet to the top of the bulkhead, and then the top of Verizon's antennas are at 43 feet.
Thank you.
And Verizon is occupying, with the mounting structure necessary for this antenna to be mounted, occupying the entire top of that bulkhead. And also, another carrier co-locator could not be placed at that same elevation without blocking Verizon's antennas. So essentially, Verizon is occupying the entire top of that bulkhead.
Okay, so with that, our theoretical co-locator would have to locate at a, certainly at a lower point on the building, and from looking at 4C, that lower point would, well, one of the potential lower points, would be that extremely sloped roof, which is common about sides, right?
Yes, there is a sloped portion of the roof on both sides. That is significantly lower than the top of the bulkhead by about 10 feet, it's 26 feet, 10 inches to the top of the sloped portion of the roof. I would also note that any antennas that were attached to that portion of the roof obviously would not be able to point directly out to the beach because the bulkhead would be in front of them.
Okay, now, what's the height of our antenna? I don't mean the elevation, but the actual size of our antenna. How many feet tall is it?
The antenna itself?
Yeah.
Or the, what we're proposing here are actually two different antennas, so each of them are approximately two feet tall.
Okay, and with the supporting structure, that adds a couple of feet?
The overall, with the supporting structure and elevation above the roof is seven feet. So seven feet from the roof line to the top of the topmost antenna.
Okay, so speaking entirely hypothetically here, and assuming, which I know you had not looked into, that the sloped roofs could accommodate any kind of installation, to match or to be the equivalent of ours, then on the sloped roof with the supporting assembly and the antenna, it would have to extend out about as far as ours extends from the bulkhead, approximately seven feet, right?
Yes, if another co-locator wanted to put in an installation that was the same as Verizon's, that's correct.
Let me ask if you could now put up one of the other photo sims. I guess number one would probably work to that. Yeah, probably one or 1B, 1C, any of those.
Okay, I have on 1C shown. Oops.
Okay.
It didn't stay there. I have 1C shown right now.
Okay. And I want to direct your attention to the area between the two sloped roofs, which is, I believe, a flat roof area?
Yeah, there is a, I'm not sure why my computer keeps jumping to another screen, sorry about that. Yes, there is a flat-roofed area in the bottom, or in the, between the two sloped areas. And that flat roof is at a 20-foot elevation.
Okay, so that is substantially lower than the 36-foot bulkhead elevation?
Correct, and it is also lower than the top of the sloped areas. So if you were to place a supporting structure on the flat portion of the roof, it would need to extend seven feet above the flat roof line just to clear the sloped portion of the roof.
Okay, and that still would not address the fact that the tower in bulkhead, or just bulkhead as we call it, would block any signal from a theoretical flat roof antenna?
Correct, that would be blocked by the bulkhead and therefore difficult for it to point toward the beach area.
Okay, thank you. Let me ask you one final question, and probably a repeat of some of the testimony that you gave last time. We had some discussion in November about the options for screening or steelping our antennas, and part of that discussion involved the fact that in the original filed plans, we called for a particular type of screening treatment, but that turned out not to be possible because that product is no longer being made. Is that an accurate statement?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, but we've offered a couple of alternative means of steelping our equipment, is that true?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And those just had to do with putting two different colorations or potential coloring onto the antenna.
Okay, and we would be willing, of course, to go with whichever of those treatments the board preferred as a condition of any approval, is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
All right. That is all I have from Ms. Connolly, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Connolly. You keep going, Mr. Delugree.
Oh, thank you. Our third witness, from VCOM Engineering, Mr. Mike Webster.
All right, good evening, sir. Take your name and business address for the record.
Michael Webster, 2540 US Route 130, Crapperay, New Jersey, 08512.
And you're testifying tonight in your capacity as?
Radio Frequency Engineer.
And you were sworn at the last meeting, I recall, correct?
Yes.
All right, so you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth to the best of your knowledge to help you guys?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Webster, let's start with a single question to wrap up from Mr. Otis's testimony. I had made reference to the unsuitability of two sites down in Spring Lake, the Bath and Tennis Club and the Municipal Pavilion, and I represented that the reason those were not suitable sites had much to do with the RF unsuitability. Was that accurate?
Yes, it was.
All right, and was it accurate for the reasons I stated that the buildings are not high enough and too far south to take care of the need which we've identified?
That is correct.
All right, thank you. It's good to be correct. Let's talk now about the DAS system, and not specifically where the negotiations and discussions may stand between the Borough and Verizon, but more the question which the board members had asked and which Mr. Kennedy followed up on post-meeting, how, if they are intended to function in this fashion, how do the Mama Luke's site and the DAS system intersect and complement one another?
The ODAS was designed along with Mama Luke's to provide complementary coverage along Ocean Avenue. So where there are ODAS nodes along Ocean Avenue, Mama Luke's will fit into a spot along the ODAS and will not provide overlapping or redundant coverage.
Okay, now, the, just to be clear, when you say ODAS, that simply means you're adding the outdoor part to the distributed antenna system?
Correct.
All right. And in the ODAS system, which I believe you're familiar with?
Yes, I am.
All right, each of the locations, antenna locations within that system, has a limited range, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, approximately, if you can, tell us how far does the coverage from each of those extend?
On the 4G frequency bands, they will cover two to three blocks north or south from each ODAS node along Ocean Avenue.
Okay, and in the DAS system, those nodes are oriented specifically to Ocean Avenue and the beach?
That is correct. Well, they are, each of those nodes are using omnidirectional antennas, so they're oriented for the entire area around, but only along Ocean Avenue.
Okay. And the Mama Luke's site, is that intended generally to help with coverage or capacity, or is it both?
It is providing capacity relief to Ocean Avenue and the beach.
Okay, and if you would, just to refresh everyone's recollection, what do we mean when we talk about capacity and capacity relief?
RF sites can provide a limited amount of service and throughput during the summer months in Delmar with the increased traffic that comes into town. The Delmar II Alpha Sector reaches what we call RF capacity, meaning too many people are attempting to use the system, and that results in dropped calls or slower or degraded data sessions, and sometimes the inability to connect at all. By adding additional sites to the network, you are increasing your RF capacity by making the new site the dominant site in the area, therefore removing a portion of the traffic base to another site.
All right, now, I believe in the November meeting, you had also testified with some particularity about the fact that there have been substantial identified capacity shortfalls in this section of Delmar, is that right?
That is correct.
All right, and as it stands right now, and assuming the summer usage patterns are the same or maybe even higher this year, those problems would be repeated in the absence of either or both of Mama Luke's and the DAS system going online?
That is correct.
Is that correct? All right. And if the DAS system were to be delayed or denied, which, of course, we shudder to think, Mama Luke's is still essential in order to provide service and capacity coverage in this area, isn't it?
Yes, to the area around Mama Luke's, that site would still need to be in place to provide any capacity relief.
Okay. Let me ask you, just to touch on the, what's now been marked as Exhibit A11, which was the January 14 revised VCOM Radio Frequency Analysis Report. You're familiar with that report, right?
Yes, I am.
What was the genesis of preparing a revised report, and in general, what is it that got revised from the original report that was submitted with the application?
The original application did not have any references to the planned ODAS system. So the revised report updated, added Table 2, which listed all of the ODAS nodes, updated Map 1 to add the ODAS nodes to all of the surrounding sites, updated Map 2 to include the best server for the ODAS nodes with the best server plot for Belmar II, and updated Map 3 to include the ODAS nodes with the proposed relief map that included the proposed Mama Luke's site. It also revised the RF data capacity for Belmar II in Figure 1 with the capacity data for the 2020 year.
All right, thank you. Would it be accurate to say that based on the conclusions that were articulated in your report and in your testimony, that whatever happens with the DAS system and whatever happens, Mama Luke's is still needed as part of the service plan for Belmar?
Yes, it is.
All right. Let me ask you to close out by revisiting one other area of your testimony from November, which concerns the health and safety regulatory compliance of the Mama Luke's site. You had prepared and submitted with, we submitted with the application, a report on that subject, right?
That is correct.
All right, and could you remind the board what were the conclusions of your report in terms of the site's prospective compliance with the FCC health and safety regulations?
The site would reach a maximum level of 3.6% of the FCC limit for general public exposure. This is well below the limit, which permits up to 100% of the standard, and is approximately 30 times lower than this limit for general public.
Okay, so in layman's terms or different terms, the level of exposure that any member of the public would expect from the installation of the proposed facilities would be roughly 3% to 4% of the amount which is permitted by law?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have for Mr. Webster right now, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Webster.
And we will conclude with Mr. Kronk, our planning expert, Tim Kronk of TK Design Associates.
Okay, just take your name and business address, please.
Timothy M. Kronk, K-R-O-N-K. Business address is P.O. Box 465, Mendham, New Jersey.
You're testifying tonight in your capacity as?
I am a New Jersey licensed professional planner.
Okay, and you were sworn at the last meeting, I recall, correct?
Yes, I was sworn and testified at the last hearing.
Okay, and just for the record, if you could raise your hand, you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth to the best of your knowledge to help you guys?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kronk, as noted, you testified at the November hearing, is that right?
Yes, I did.
And at that time, you presented, as I recall, compelling testimony about the satisfaction of the various legal requirements for the elements of relief that were required for this project.
Yes, that is correct.
Even the compelling part?
Even the compelling part.
All right, let me just ask you, not to repeat that testimony, but to update it, if you will, based on the testimony that you've heard tonight from the three witnesses who preceded you, as well as the testimony from the initial hearing, could you offer an opinion to the board as to whether this project still meets the applicable legal standards for the relief of use variance, D6 site variance, front setback variance, and the design waiver for the fence design?
Certainly, as a supplement to the testimony from the prior hearing, the other witnesses that testified this evening were very beneficial in clarifying the, any outstanding issues regarding the suitability of this location. The site acquisition consultant clearly ruled out any other potential locations for co-location in this area, the, as well as the permitted zones in the municipality. Those were discussed in testimony from a planning perspective, but we did not have the real estate testimony on the prior. but we did not have the real estate testimony on the prior application. With regard to the engineer's testimony, there were some open-ended questions regarding the ability of other carriers to co-locate on the subject property. And I do believe that Ms. Connolly's testimony this evening clearly laid out the, I don't want to say obvious, but it clearly laid out the difficulties that this facility would present in being a co-location location for any other carrier. And lastly, the additional radio frequency testimony that we just heard, I think was pretty clear in explaining how that this macro facility is required to address the radio frequency deficiencies in the area, either with or without the Verizon DAS plans that are pending with the municipality. So for those reasons, I do believe that the subject location does remain particularly suited. I do believe our application is stronger based upon the additional testimony that we heard this evening. And I do believe the board can grant the variances, both D1, D6, and bulk, as well as the fence waiver.
Thank you, Mr. Kronk. I have no further questions from Mr. Kronk, and he is our final scheduled witness.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Delugree. So I'll take that as the end of your testimony?
Yes, that is, thank you.
Excellent. With that, we're going to open it up to board questions. Why don't we start with Mr. Fitzgerald?
Good evening. Thank you for the testimony. That was very interesting and enlightening. I'm struggling with some jurisdiction matter here. This is currently a residential zone. And my concern rests with a decision made to permit an antenna on the property relegates this piece of property to be commercial in perpetuity. And I think the significance and seriousness of that conversion of use from potential or likely in the future residential, which we saw all along the beachfront, goes away permanently once this antenna is permitted to go on that property. Could somebody on the Verizon side please help me understand if that line of thought is mistaken?
If you don't mind, I'll take that one. It's a legitimate concern, only because any time you add a use to a structure, as long as that use is there, if you want to change the underlying use, then, you know, the use, the second use, is going to have to be dealt with or addressed in some way. But with that said, the site is commercial now. I don't know if there's any reason to think that it would be likely to stop being commercial in the near future, but...
May I ask you there? Are you familiar with the history of Belmar and the conversion of the commercial properties on the beachfront from commercial to residential over the last, I don't know, 30 years?
I won't say I'm familiar with it, I've heard of it. So I'm not, I can't say that that's not going to happen, certainly.
Are you also aware that's part of our, you know, long-term outlook to be in favor of that type of conversion and development?
Oh, I wasn't personally aware, but that's not unusual.
Okay. I'll let you answer, though. I didn't need to...
Come on.
Please finish.
Anytime we add, even in a town where there's not a likelihood that there would be pressure in the future for a change in underlying use, we have typically leases that have an initial term of, you know, five years, 10 years, with options to extend. If, you know, we're coming up on an option term and the owner has indicated that they want to sell the building, well, you know, for whatever reasons, including the change of use, then, you know, we're, as less thieves, our interests are secondary to those of the owner at that point. If it happens during a lease, during the term of one of the, either the initial lease term or one of the extensions, then, you know, typically the answer is that the new owner, the prospective new owner, would have to make some financial arrangements, which is common. You know, same as if we didn't exist there and someone wanted to buy the restaurant use, you know, the price is going to have to reflect that the owner is giving up some anticipated revenue stream.
What is the lease term that you're, that's under consideration at this point?
I don't know what this particular lease term is. I know that typically they do it in blocks of five years and they have options...
Do you think it's material that we know what this particular one is, rather than what we think it is?
I don't, I'm not going to say you shouldn't have the information. Certainly, I could find out what the lease term is. But I don't know how that plays into the immediate question.
Well, let me follow up. Assume you're right, and that's five years. And at the end of five years, this gentleman wants to build a house on the property. Where would you move your intended to at that time?
Don't know.
So why don't you decide that now and not, and not put us in that position? So let's leave it with, let's confirm what the lease term is. That's critically important. And then I have one other question, and then we can leave it up to the other board members. Could you please state what the positive criteria is for the community or the residents of the town other than dealing with your capacity problem that you have in the summer, which we all have capacity problems in the summer, including parking and lines at restaurants and traffic? We all understand summertime capacity problems probably better than most. But other than, other than dealing with the capacity problem, could you please state your positive criteria?
Sure. The courts have, they've handled lots and lots of cases involving wireless facilities. And they've developed a general test that says you meet the positive criteria if you hold an FCC license, which of course Verizon does, and the site that you've identified is particularly suited to handle or to address an identified service need. Now, of course, you have to also deal with any negative impacts. But from the positive side, that's basically the test. So that's why the testimony in these kind of cases is always, obviously, that they hold the license and that the site that they've chosen is one that, you know, addresses what, a need that's been identified and does so, you know, at least as well as any other sites that you could have identified.
So the negative criteria portion of this, potential or highly potential negative criteria, given that it's a seasonal business located on that premise. If you're familiar with the next block down on 19th and Surf Avenue, there's a boarded-up building on the oceanfront there, and it's been boarded up for about 20 years now. The owner decided that, you know, he wanted it boarded up. And apparently, the town has no recourse to change what, you know, has the appearance of an abandoned property. If this owner of MAMA-LOOX is collecting a rent, and I don't know what that rent is, whether it's $100 a month or $10,000 a month, but if he's collecting a rent on that property and we're determined that that rent could service his maintenance and his taxes on that property, or exceeded even, he could board up that building. And then that site would be nothing more than a cell tower on an oceanfront prime piece of real estate in this town. So to me, that's a significant negative criteria. I'm not really sure you have a way of addressing that or the town has a way of addressing that potential.
Well, you know, I think they do, though. Because I live myself in a shorefront town in Brigantine. So, you know, we're cognizant of both the seasonal aspect of things and that, you know, there's money to be made in season. I, in general, if there's a building that isn't up to property codes, then the borough always has recourse to compel them, the owner, to bring it up to code. If it's in such a condition that it's, you know, unsafe or a fire hazard, they even have the power to...
It would just be boarded up and just be an antenna. It wouldn't be necessarily violating any of the property upkeep or anything like that. It would just be a boarded-up building at the corner of, you know, 18th and Ocean.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't, I really can't assume, because I haven't seen this happen, that the owner of a successful business, a seasonal business, albeit it's still successful, would just voluntarily board up this building.
I guess that depends on, I guess that depends on how much he's getting for rent on the antenna, correct?
Well, no. Because if I have a revenue stream from my regular business, then what you get from the antenna is additional to that.
Right. It could become the sole source, it could become the sole source of income for that piece of property and still be quite lucrative.
Well, I, I don't, I don't, we don't see that happen, to be honest. We just don't see that...
If it happened at another, at another property in town, just a little bit down the street, all you'd have to do is head a little bit north, then you could find a property that has a whole bunch of antennas on it that is probably more profitable as an antenna site than it is as a hotel. So I don't really have any more questions. I just am concerned that I don't believe the, that the positive criteria is being met, although it feels you think it is.
Oh, before we leave your question, the lease term, as I understand it, is for an initial five-year term with five-year renewals and can be terminated by either party at the 10-year mark.
So it's a 10-year lease?
Unless, you know, Verizon Wireless chose not to exercise the option after the first five years.
Would you consider allowing, allowing... I just want to make sure the town has some recourse here if that property, if that property were to stop being used as commercial property and were to simply get boarded up, that the lease would include some recourse that the town could take? That would be one of the only ways that I would be open to considering looking at this differently. Because I'm very, very concerned that this just becomes an antenna space and no longer a property on the beachfront, whether it's commercial or residential.
I don't know if this would help you in your analysis, but, you know, certainly our planner, Mr. Kronk, could address the highest and best use of the property and, you know, from a planning perspective, what is the, you know, more likely future of a property like that? Because honestly, in our experience, it is unseen, unheard of, where you have a commercial property on which we locate antennas that then ceases to be under...
It's a residential property. Now, remind you, it's a residential property. It's zone residential.
No, I understand.
And our approving this would relegate it to be a commercial property forever. And that's where I started my comment, I'll finish it there, too. I question whether we have standing to make a decision on a piece of land in town and convert it from residential to commercial. I've been under the impression that that's the planning board's responsibility for that type of use conversion. But I would defer to somebody who's more knowledgeable than I. But I am concerned about, about that permanent conversion from residential to commercial.
Well, and again, I don't know if this will help you, but right now, because you have apparently an existing non-conforming grandfathered commercial use on the site, that would be by law allowed to continue in its present form, with or without the antenna on the top, as long as the owner chose. So, I mean, you could have, for the, from now till the end of time, if the owner chose to do so, you would have that commercial use there.
That's correct. And if he chose to make it, convert it to a house, which many front, beachfront businesses have done, it can be done without any problem. Where here, it's locking this at a minimum of 10 years without significant issue. I'd like to pass along, so I don't want to take up all the question time here and for have this go longer than it has to. So I'd like other board members to give their opinions as well.
Thanks, Mr. Fitzgerald. Mr. Delugree, did you want to add on to anything before I move to the next member?
No, no, we can pick up as we get through. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Why don't we go to Mr. Ross next?
You mentioned that there's two stealthing options. I noticed that the figures or the pictures, they changed from the first time around. They were more camouflaged and looked like clouds and sky. And it looks like the two options are beige and silver, is that right?
Let me ask Ms. Connolly to address that, if she would.
Yes, the two options that we're showing is one with a beige coloring, which would match the existing building. And the other is with more of a white, gray color, just to be more neutral.
Okay. And then, I wasn't going to bring it up anymore, but you guys mentioned it a couple of times. So I just want to get some clarification. The pavilion in Spring Lake that you did the study on, that was too far south, you said?
Oh, yeah. Let me defer that question. Probably it's best to have an RF answer to that, to Mr. Webster.
Yes. As the current need for this application is along Ocean Avenue, the original site that the search area was named under is not suitable for the current requested use. Unfortunately, Verizon normally does not update search area names of sites as the need of the site develops over time.
Okay. I just wanted some clarification on that, because there's two pavilions on the Spring Lake boardwalk. Which one are you referring to?
The northernmost one that I don't have an address in front of me.
Okay. I was just curious, because all of our paperwork, whenever you applied for this, had Breakers all over, Spring Lake Breakers. And I remember last time at the testimony, you said that that was the optimal choice, but that the building wasn't available. And I think you reiterated that this evening, that Breakers wasn't a possibility because the building wasn't available. But then the building that's much further north was deemed too far south. So I just wanted to get some clarification on that. And that's it? That's the answer, it's too far south, even though the Breakers was...
Yeah, no, that, that is, that is the truth. Is that the search area was just named Breaker Spring Lake? And as that developed over time, the nature of the need changed, but the name of the site in Verizon's system never updates with it.
Okay. I mean, we have no way to verify any of this information. We're kind of taking it at your word for it. But that's why whenever, just didn't, I wasn't following the too far south after that, so... All right, I have no further questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
Hey, John, I'm sorry, I do have one more question.
No, you're out, sorry.
I wrote it down here. So the positive, the positive criteria is that calls won't drop, things like that. I want clarification, this will only benefit Verizon customers, is that correct?
Yes, this site will only service Verizon customers.
Yeah, so it's not a brand-agnostic system? I mean, anybody on the beach that doesn't have Verizon will not seek, will not realize a benefit from this?
That is correct.
Okay. Same with the antennas, the DAS, I think you're calling them, same with those?
The proposed ODAS is only Verizon appropriate.
Okay. So can I ask another question then, if I'll run? And you might not know the answer. But it seems like Verizon's the only company that keeps coming to us for these locations. Are other cell phone providers finding locations in adequate places that don't require zoning approval?
That, I, I'm not sure I have a good answer for that. Verizon is the only one that I do work for on a regular basis. AT&amp;T and T-Mobile, I are not customers of my clients.
I guess I'm just trying to understand, because like if people were on the beach that don't have Verizon, they should be experiencing tons of dropped calls and things like that. Because I don't know of any antennas that have come before us for the same type of relief for the beach area or any area in town, as far as I've been on the board for almost nine years now. Is that accurate?
It's potentially accurate. I can't, I can't... Uh, it's potentially accurate, I, I can't, I can't opine on other systems that I don't know, have any detailed information on.
Okay, I was just trying to understand, like, what happens if we disapprove, like, is there's going to be zero service up there, you know, what is the ramifications, I guess I'm still trying to understand, so thank you, no further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. How about we go to Mr. Hutchison next?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Some figures were recorded here about exposure in percentage, and that's fairly meaningless if, if we don't talk about distance, because of, you know, power and, you know, logarithmic scales and things like that, so I want to know what those very small percentages of exposure, what's the distance, is it, you know, in the building, 20 feet away, across the street, in the house, what is that?
When we put together the exposure reports, we look at the worst-case scenario in the area around the proposed facility. For this case, it looked at the roof of the building just to the north of Mama Loops on Ocean Avenue, so that would be a distance, I don't have the exact distance in front of me, I believe it's about 25 to 30 feet to the north.
How about people within the building itself?
Uh, the antenna.
These are omnidirectional antennas, is that correct?
No, on this facility, we are not installing omnidirectional antennas, the antenna is cylindrical in nature, but the actual antennas on the inside are directional, there'll be two directional antennas facing one towards the north on Ocean Avenue and one south on Ocean Avenue.
So it's not, not going to really affect people on the beach, then?
Uh, no, they have a, they have a bead width that will cover along the entire radius along Ocean Avenue.
That would say that that's on the directional to me.
It will not cover back inland towards inland delta.
So it's kind of a semicircle that, that goes from north through east to south?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, the second thing, I'm, I'm not reassured about the co-location issue, I can see if this is approved, another company could come in and say, great, we don't even have to worry about anything, we could just put a big antenna, 12-foot tripod on top of the flat part of that roof, and so if it doesn't, you know, have a problem, you know, a little bit of problem with the, the, you know, tower that's in front of it where your antenna is, yeah, you know, it'd be a few dozen people on the beach, it would have a little bit of problem, but otherwise, we could get great coverage, north and south, you know, and, you know, I don't, I'm not reassured that, that's my biggest issue, is once we approve this, if we approve it, other companies are going to say, hey, they did all the work, Verizon did all the work, we can come in there, we really can't be denied, you know, so maybe the roof needs a little reinforcement, that, that flat part, but do you see an issue with my position on that?
Let me take that one, if I could, and I'll do this mostly for Mr. Kennedy's benefit, the citation that I think would, would govern this and it would protect you is in Title 47 of the Code of Federal Regulations, that 1.6100, small letter B, number seven.
Say it again, I missed it.
All right, 47 CFR 1.6100B72, that's the portion of the co-location statute that deals with permissible increases, or actually, that and BI, and those two together, they deal with the permissible increases in the height or the width of a structure, and in order for you to get a buy right co-location, and as we've attempted to get to in going through some of Ms. Conley's testimony, this building does not seem like it could accommodate that, because in, in every case, you would need to extend at least seven feet from the existing surfaces, and you're maxed out at a permissible increase of six feet. So whether you want, whether you're aiming to put a second group of antennas on that flat roof, or somehow rig something up to the slope roof, in either case, you're maxed out at six feet extension from that surface. If you're over that, you're not a co-locator, or not a buy right co-locator, and you have to go to the board for whatever relief is needed.
I, I still concede that, okay, we can put something from the, the slope roof, so I only get six feet, but I'm, it's a very inexpensive operation then, because I don't have to go through any legal problems or anything like that, and it's already been done, so that, that's my concern anyway. Thank you, no further.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchison, oh, thank you, Mr. Hutchison, uh, let's go to Mr. Malango.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My first question may be for our attorney, Kevin?
Yes.
If this application was to be approved, that means any co-locator could come in, maybe with some type of design that would work, and they can install on that building without coming back to the board? They were creative enough to find something that would work?
Yeah, if I can just get back to you, I'm going to find the exact, I, I have the exact language, so just give me a few minutes, I'll get back to Mr. Malango on that one.
Okay, thank you. My second question is for Colleen Conley. Colleen, you said there would be no modifications, structural installations to further assist the structure that the antenna is going on?
No, that's not necessary.
Everything that's there will support the antenna and connections that you're putting?
Yes, correct.
On that tower?
Yes, correct.
Above that scope?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'd like Kevin to come back, if I can come back after my questions, after he answers it.
Of course, and, Mr. Kennedy, please take your time, while we're waiting, we're going to move to Ms. Dietz.
So, I guess to follow up on part of that question, I, I would just like to understand, I know we're talking about what other companies that would come before us and they'd have the right, once this is done, but what, what are any limitations that Mama Loops would have to kind of make changes to their roof? Are there certain things that they're able to do that would change, that they wouldn't have to come to the board first, is there, so if they're limited, because right now, all they have is that little, that little chimney up front, and that's all been taken from Verizon, is there something that Mama Loops will be able to do without permission, or that would be within their rights to do, and they would be the variance that would open it up to a lot more companies coming, and I don't know if they're, if anybody knows the answer to that, but I'm just curious if it really lies in the hands of the, the wireless companies, or if they can be proactive and say, look, you know, once we have this fixed, we can bring all of these, you know, we'll have the opportunity to, to make more money, and, and I will say, I have some concerns that Mark had also mentioned about, really, what, what rights do we have if this is done, if we're, if we're looking to, we're down the line, have that oceanfront property become residential, and are we, would we be restricting that in the future, once we allow this, so that, that would be just concerns that I have right now. That's all, thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Dietz, and I have, I have kind of a similar question, and I'll toss it to Mr. Bianchi, could the owner of Mama Loops extend the roof without coming through the zoning board if they were keeping it under 36 feet in that zone, if they were just to put an addition on to their building?
No, that, that's an expansion of a non-conforming use that comes over the board.
Okay, but theoretically, they could do it, if, if they asked and we gave them permission.
Say that again?
I guess if the board, if the board granted approval for them to add on to their building, that's within, that's within a reasonable possibility.
Yeah, I mean, if the board granted permission, yeah, they could, they could do that, yeah.
Okay.
Or should, or should if they, as noted about changing their antennas all the time, this is about the fifth time since I've been on board, 10th Avenue, they've changed that one, I'd say at least five times, the one on Main Street, on, uh, night, between night and 10th, that's been changed a number of times, what's going to happen to this antenna in three years, updated, what's going to happen, are they going to increase the size of this thing, or what are they going to do? Anybody have an idea?
Well, Mr. Delugree, I'll, I'll, I'll frame that question to you, maybe you could answer, um, once, if the application were approved and, and you're, you're allowed to put this antenna, does the, does the code or the regulation allow you to change what's up there, or, or, I guess exacerbate it in any way?
Um, no, the short answer is no, because remember, we would not be a co-locator, we wouldn't be eligible for any of the treatments the co-locators might be eligible for, so we're going to be bound by whatever are the terms of an approval, so we presented, you know, a particular design, using equipment of a particular size and height, and, you know, we, we can't go beyond or, or unilaterally, change any of the dimensional aspects that were approved by the board, so, short answer, no, we, we would not have any unilateral right to do anything that was not consistent with the approval. I mean, equipment changes from time to time when things upgrade, but it's not as if we could replace the two-foot antenna with a six-foot antenna, that would require us to come back to you and, you know, somehow persuade you that that was something you should allow us to do. And if I, just to follow up on one of the earlier points, too, the, the building is a non-conforming use, as was noted, I would imagine the structure is probably also a non-conforming structure, given the use isn't permitted, so, you know, my understanding generally is that any, any changes, material changes to that building or to the use that's going on there would require a person to come back to the board and get relief of whatever kind, you know, it could be de-variants to expand an non-conforming use, or, or other relief related to that.
I got you, and, and I don't know who would know this question, but if, if that owner were to come through this board and ask for an expansion of a non-conforming use, and not discuss any of the antenna use or potential antenna use, his expansion could be approved, and then a co-locator, co-locator could then eye that site up as a, a potential site and, and put, put additional antennas on, would that be correct?
I would say that's a pretty remote possibility, because the person who came to you and sought relief needs to explain to you why they need that relief and prove to you that they meet the applicable standards for what would almost certainly be at least a de-variant to expand the non-conforming use, and with that, you know, if, if it was necessary, if, I'm totally hypothetical, you know, if an owner came in and said, I want to expand my building because I want to add some more seating, and, you know, part of that plan was also maybe not revealed to you, was to create space to accommodate co-locators, well, the board, in considering the initial application, would have the right to impose conditions as to what could or couldn't be done with any approved expanded space.
So you think we could then say that he, he would not be allowed to allow co-locators on the roof?
I think you would be allowed to limit whatever, what other uses could be added to the building, unless, as a matter of right, you can never, I mean, no board can ever absolutely say you can't come back to us and even ask for something, but that's all that they would have the right to do, is come back and ask you for whatever additional approvals might be needed to add antennas to the site, and that's going to be in your discretion to grant or not grant.
Thank you, and, and Mr. Kennedy, if you're, if you're still looking up the answers, you could, you could weigh in here, but I, I guess, I guess my question is, I mean, I, we, we've had these, we, we've had these co-locator applications come before us, and as a, as a town, I, I think Mr. Bianchi doesn't know whether to say yes or no, it gets tossed to our board, and then we're, we're told it's a, it's a polite hearing, but this, this co-locator is going to, going to place their antenna wherever they want once it's, once, once the first antenna is there, I mean, I, I think that's, that's my major concern on something like this, and I just don't, I, I just don't see, I, I just don't see that we could stop a co-locator from coming in here if this application is approved, and, and I guess my question to you is, is, is that generally a correct observation?
Yeah, if, if, I'm sorry. Rich, why don't you go, and then I'll answer it?
Okay, now, I was going to say I'll defer to Mr. Kennedy, but I guess I won't.
That, that's the power of, of jumping first, Mr. Chairman.
The, the short answer is no, that's, that's not really accurate, the co-location statute, which I suspect Mr. Kennedy will be schooling you about in a minute, it does give some certain general rights for the second carrier, to put facilities on a given property or in a given structure, but there are real limits to it, there's dimensional limits, there's limits that require, for example, that your second set of antennas cannot defeat any of the stealthing aspects that were part of the original approval, and in this case, in practical terms, you know, we're proposing to screen our antennas, well, anybody who came along would not only have to show you that they met the dimensional requirements, and as, you know, we, we talked about in Ms. Conley's testimony, I don't think this building physically could accommodate it, given what those dimensional restrictions are, but they would also have to comply with the, the stealthing that would have been imposed on a prior approval for wireless at the site, and also comply with any other conditions that were imposed on the initial approval, so it, you know, it, it opens the door a little bit, but in practical terms, you know, each given site is going to rise or fall on its merits, and it's not by any means carte blanche for the second, for the second user to basically come in and say, yeah, I'm going to put my antennas here and you can't stop me.
Thank you.
Okay, sure.
Go ahead, Mr. Kennedy.
Sure, to your question and some of the other questions, including Mr. Malango, so, let me just start off by saying, you know, these, these applications are always tough and challenging and interesting applications, because unlike 99.99% of all of our other applications, we just deal with our zoning ordinances, and whether or not the applicants are satisfying the setback for the use, and, and, and that's what we deal with, and you all are pretty much experts in that, and, and the courts recognize that you're experts, that you're representatives and members of the community and ambassadors of the community, and that you all, you know, live here and, and have as good, if not better, understanding of the ordinances and the impact of deviations, so they defer to you, but what makes these cases, and what Mr. Delugree has built, respectfully has built his career on, is that these telecommunications issues are, as you've indicated, slightly different, and they're different because we just don't have to deal with our ordinances, but rather we have to deal with federal regulations, and Mr. Delugree has, has satisfied, or has referenced some of them, and we have state statutes to deal with, too, and I, we have said in the past, and I think some of you have said this, and I have said it in tongue-in-cheek, that the telecommunications industry has, you know, very, very, very good lobbyists, and, and the, the federal regulations are set up that our, again, I mean this respectfully, our little Belmar ordinances do not trump the federal regulations, so that's what makes the, these things difficult, and that would, which I understand, having been fortunate enough to have represented you on other applications, I know that is what causes concern for the board members, is that there are federal regulations at play, so just to go to some of the, the state statute, Rich, I think it's NJIS 4055D-46.2, that's basically the, the co-location statute, Rich?
Yeah, that's the state co-location.
Okay, and, and that is basically sort of, Mr. Lisca, what you're asking about now, about co-location, and just as I understand, or as I recall, it says, and I'll read it, it's not, it's not too, too long at all, it says, "An application for development to co-locate wireless communications equipment on a wireless communication support structure..." on a wireless communication support structure or in an existing equipment compound shall not be subject to site plan review, provided that the application meets the following requirements. One, the wireless communication support structure shall have been previously granted all necessary approvals by the appropriate approving authority. Two, the proposed co-location shall not increase, A, the overall height of the wireless communication support structure more than 10% of the original height of the wireless communication support structure, B, the width of the wireless communication support structure, or C, the square footage of the existing com, existing equipment compound to an area greater than 2,500 square feet." And then the third part of that statute says, "The proposed co-location complies with the final approval of the wireless communication support structure and all conditions attached thereto, and does not create a condition for which variance relief would be required pursuant to applicable law." Rich, is that a fairly accurate resuscitation of still the current laws that exist today?
It's definitely 100% accurate about the New Jersey statute, and there's the corresponding federal regulations I alluded to, which differ slightly. But the combined effect of the two of them is, you know, you have to, if you're a proposed co-locator, you have to show that your co-location is going to fit within the standards.
Right. And I, and I guess too, that, that, that board member's concern is, not concern, but the board member's question is, if this is an approved site and you meet those qualifications, I think the, the New Jersey state statute pretty much indicates that you basically shall not be subject to site plan review. So Ted, my understanding is if, if some co-location company request comes to you and proves to you that they meet those standards, you basically administratively approve it, or having a bonus of caution, you get the zoning board to say, "Yeah." I mean, that's, that's pretty much how it operates, correct? Okay. And, and, and so, so Mr. Chairman, what you and some of the members of the board seem to be asking here, and totally awesome question, and I don't have the answer, and I don't know we're going to have the answer tonight, is about are there co-location restrictions beyond what we just talked about that can be placed? And then the secondary question would be to Mr. Fitzgerald's point about, well, what, is there any type of restriction about, you know, making sure that that principal underlying use is, is still active and it's not just a building to host an antenna? And then some of the other questions. So I, I, I don't know. I mean, Rich, do you have answers to those questions? Or is that something I think I might need to do more research on that? But that's just my thought for this moment.
Let's see. I, I won't have an ultimate answer right now to the second question, but let me touch on it. As to the other, the other piece of it, just going back to the, the idea that every site, you know, stands on its own and whatever its circumstances that determines what you can and can't do there. This particular building, I think you're, you're pretty solid in assuming that no one is going to be able to co-locate there because just physically, you, you couldn't install antennas beyond the one we're proposing. Anywhere in that building that are going to meet the, the objective criteria that you need to meet in order to be a co-locator, which means, like anybody else, then you're going to have to come to the board and get your use variance and whatever other, whatever other relief is needed. And that's entirely within the board's control when it gets to that point. The other question-
Actually, can I just jump in for one second and ask you one question on that? So just, and again, Mr. Chairman, at the risk of overstepping my bounds, I'm just sort of bouncing off some of the, the concerns. So Rich, I guess what if the next question became, well, what type of restrictions would we be allowed? I mean, you, you've given a very good answer about practically speaking, under existing conditions, it would seem unlikely that there would be a co-location. I guess just if the board members had that concern, that nagging concern, out of an abundance of caution, what other restrictions, types of restrictions or limitations could you, if any, could you put on this to assuage the board's concerns? Have you done this in other towns? Have this, or have you heard of this being done in other, in other towns? I mean, what, you hear what the board's concerns are? What do you think, what you could do to assuage? And maybe we might not have an answer for that tonight.
Well, well, good question. The, we, I'll start by saying, we obviously would need to give us some more thought, and probably that takes us past tonight and have some internal discussion. But here's, here's the direction that I think those thoughts and discussion would take us. That if you wanted to have conditions for stealthing, which we're already offering anyway, or maybe a condition that, you know, limits the size of, of our facilities in particular ways to match up, obviously, with what we're proposing, but which would then have the effect of, should anybody else come along and have the idea that they're going to co-locate there, they would have to, in addition to meeting all the objective dimensional standards from the state and the federal regulations, would have to then show that they also are giving the same level and type of stealthing, and that they are, you know, proposing facilities which are no different, no larger, you know, dimensionally, or in number than what we have. You could extend that as well to the nature of the equipment that we're proposing. As you know, we're, we're proposing ground-level, building-mounted stuff, you know, make that, that could be also made a specific condition. All of which makes it, you know, to my thinking, very, very unlikely that anybody would be able to come in and show that they can meet the objective statutory criteria as well as the conditions of the prior approval. The, the issue of conservative concern about buildings falling into disuse, with the exception of, you know, wireless facilities still operating on them, honestly, I have not seen that and run into it. And I, I don't say that to diminish the concern, just, you know, it's not something we have practical experience on because it, it just hasn't happened. The amount of rent that the landlords get typically, you know, scarcely puts a dent in their, their annual tax and insurance nut, you know, much less throws off enough money that they would give up whatever other ongoing revenue streams they have there.
Right.
With that, with that, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I cut you off.
Oh, sorry. You know, if we were going to have a conversation with the owner, and I don't know which direction this would take, honestly, because we have not had such conversation, but, you know, the owner might be willing and Verizon might be able to, you know, agree that the duration of, of the use would be key to the duration of the underlying use.
Right. And, you know, I'll just say, I'm sorry, I'm writing and swimming back and forth. I was just going to say to, to Mr. Fitzgerald's point, and it's a very good point, it's a very interesting and very unique and very skilled and nuanced way of looking at. Mr. Chairman, you'll recall that in prior approvals for, whether it was Verizon or any other telecommunications industry, we have always had a, a condition, totally standard, I think, that sort of said, "Hey, the utility, I mean, the, the, the company has to keep their, you know, antennas and equipment in order, and if it's old and dilapidated and compromised or not in use, they have to take it down." We say, you know, "Have something in the lease to perfect that." And so Mr. Fitzgerald, for reasons that he sees in other towns and other parts of this town, is saying, "Well, what happens if the, you know, the, the antenna equipment is all fine, but, but the rest of the building's not?" So it's an interesting way and a reverse way of looking at it, but I think an important way of looking at it. And Rich, maybe between now and, you know, whenever this meeting is presumably going to be continued to, we can think of things. And like you said, that might be one way, what you just said, limiting the, the, you know, the, 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 the use, so to speak, to, or the, the antenna approval, so to speak, to the active, you know, use of the building. That might be one. I'm just thinking out loud.
Thanks for offering, thanks for offering that, Mr. Kennedy. I, I had another question for you, Mr. Kennedy, and, and I'm kind of thinking out loud here. Usually when we see applications, at least for me, I'm making a decision that what is for the, what I think would be best for Belmar, the betterment of a neighborhood. This application seems to, to benefit the building owner and Verizon customers. And I'm having trouble, I'm having trouble wrestling how I could decide to, to benefit, to benefit a property owner and a, and a, and a company at the expense of the rest of the residents in Belmar.
Well, and that, that's a totally fair thought, and I, I can hear that in your voice, and I hear that in the voices of all the other board members, which, by the way, is why Belmar zoning board is just a great bunch of board members, because you always are looking out for what represents a better overall zoning alternative for the borough of Belmar. And Mr. Chairman, you weren't on the very part of the beginning meeting tonight, but we were going over some of the resolutions of approval from prior, and, and some of the points that we raised tonight were that very thing, that we had a discussion, "Does this represent a better overall zoning alternative for the borough of Belmar?" And that was the key. Now, the, the, the issue is, that's a standard in conjunction with New Jersey case law in terms of, you know, statutory issues related to grants of variances. When you have some different state statutes and some preempting federal regulations, it's, it's just, you know, for instance, let's just say someone was concerned about the health issues, that this was a potentially adverse health issue. New Jersey law is quite clear, the federal regulations are quite clear, that as long as they meet the federal FCC guidelines, that, that they, they satisfy, and that, and that's not a reason. So the reason you don't have that, that liberal ability to say, "Hey, I want to say, is this better for Belmar, yes or no?" Is because we have to deal with the federal regulations and, and the, the state statute, which supersede our ordinances. So that was, that is what makes it, you know, different than our other standard zoning applications.
I got you. Let me ask you this, let me ask you this then. Given that this is a commercial property that's, that's grandfathered into a residential zone, and it could, to, to me, I feel like this is a particularly not well-suited property for, for something like this, because it, it could support this commercial structure in, in a, in a non-conforming use. I mean, is that, is that a fair assessment?
Absolutely a fair question and offhand. I don't know if there have been any specific cases on that, but that's definitely something that we could research should the application be, be continued. And it's a, it's a totally fair question. I don't know what the answer is, and I don't know if you'll like the answer, not like the answer, but it's a totally fair question and fair concern.
All right. And, and Mr. DeLucre, you know, one of the things we have in town is, there's another, like, we've, we've seen these applications before. There's another property in town that, that I can see from the street, and they have over 18 antennas on their roof. Is, can you tell us the average, I guess, the average payment or, or cost of a lease agreement that, that a property owner will, will make with, with an antenna? Is, is there an average number?
Well, to be perfectly candid with you, even if I knew the answer of average, I really couldn't share with you because that would be proprietary information. But I do know that it varies based on, you know, the, the facility, the, the amount of service need that you're covering by it, you know, how good a negotiator the, the owner is. There's, I mean, there's sort of a market, and people who are in the business of, of doing these things, you know, have a, have a sense of, in any given area, what is the, the right market, and you try and put your number somewhere in there. But it does vary. And it varies by carrier too.
And there's no chance you could just offer us a range there?
If I, if I did, I'd be misleading you, honestly, because it does vary so much. And I couldn't reveal, you know, anything about the negotiations or the agreement with this owner, because, again, that's proprietary information for them.
Fair enough, Mr. DeLucre. Thank you. That's it for my questions. Mr. Malango, did you want to come back to anything?
I, I think I'll say, bye, no comments.
You said you would hold your, hold it for comments?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions?
I have a, a question, if I could.
Sure, Ms. Dees.
This was just really to what Kevin just said. I, I'm just not clear. Kevin, are you saying that in order for us to vote no to this application, we would have to, to, to keep in mind what the state federal regulations are, of what needs to be met for them to, to come before the zoning board, or?
Yes. I'm, I'm sorry.
Okay. So I, can you explain to us what that would be then?
Sure.
What grounds would we be able to vote no on then?
So let me, let me just start by saying, in, in a traditional, typical zoning application where someone wants to put a setback, well, all of the resolutions that we adopted tonight, those standards are basically set forth in New Jersey case law, and they talk about what represents the federal zoning alternative. Is there some type of hardship? Do they benefit that way the detriment, positive criteria and negative criteria? And we'll all go into that in a, in a little bit. With the telecommunications industry and the federal regulations, it's, it's very different. And I can give you a much more intense presentation next time. I'll, I'll be able to cite those, those things. But it's, it's the, what I would say is the, and I don't think I'm being inappropriate here, the, the discretion that you have in a traditional zoning application based solely on borough of Belmar zoning ordinances is much greater than the discretion you have now given these, the federal regulations and state statutes that we have to deal with. And I'll, I'll give you a more specific answer at the next time, I promise.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I think that's important for us to know, really, what, what grounds we, we have to make our decision based on what, you know, criteria.
Fair enough. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dees. Did anybody else have any other questions? All right. We'll close the question, the board question. Oh, yes?
I think we have Amory.
Sorry. Sorry, I know, I'm kind of in the dark here a little bit. Am I, I, I know I'm not supposed to be voting, so am I allowed to ask questions in this session?
Absolutely, yes. Absolutely.
Okay. So I have a few questions, and these may have been raised during the first hearing, so if I'm off-base here-
Sure.
-please direct me. So I know the attorney said what the standard was, talking about, is the site particularly suited to address the need? I wanted to know, who, who identified the need, and I'll try to limit that noise, and how was the need identified? And is this technology that you're, this antenna, is this state-of-the-art technology to address this need?
What I'll give you a real thumbnail answer is, in many respects, and then Mr. DeLucre will, will give you an answer as well, in many respects, the law, the federal regulations say that the need is satisfied if, if the applicants come before you and prove that there is a gap in coverage, and that this application, if approved, will satisfy that gap. And that was, when you, if you are able to listen to the tape, that was a lot of the first portion of the tape, wherein they say, "Hey, this is our gap, and, and this is how the gap needs to be fixed, and this is, we have to put the antenna somewhere in this general vicinity so that we can meet this gap." But that is, I mean, Rich, was that a fairly accurate answer from my point of view?
Yeah, I would say so.
So, but yes, that was, and, and so that's an excellent question, and they, they did address that, you know, at, at some point during, during the first meeting.
Okay. Another question I had was, the RF engineer was talking about the target area, and I didn't hear if he mentioned tonight what the distance of that target area is, because going back to Chuck's question about the distance to the pavilion and the breakers area, I was trying to understand what the target area that was looked or examined for a potential site.
Excellent question. And Rich, can you do, uh, direct that to the appropriate witness?
I will. Thank you. Mr. Webster, could you address that, please?
As to the size of the original search area, I do not know what the size of that was. I was not involved with the site at that time. I didn't get involved with the site until the Mama Luke's location was selected.
Hi. So, Amory, that's going to be, put on our list that Mr. DeLucre is going to try to get us an answer for the next time if we don't have it tonight.
Okay. And part of my question- And part of my question is, I think, related to what Chuck had raised also, was because, you know, the Breakers is farther south than the north end pavilion in Spring Lake. So I just, that didn't sound clear in the answer that Mr. Webster had given to Chuck earlier. Um, so, another question I had is, there's a house directly, uh, west of Mama Luke's. Is that distance considered, I assume that's considered a safe distance, and that's within? Can you, can somebody just explain what the minimum required distance is between that type of antenna and a residence?
Sure. Excellent question. Rich, who, who would answer that? Uh, once again, Mr. Webster.
The, the minimum distance is not federally, federally regulated, um, to residents. Uh, what is regulated is the exposure that the general public can have, um, and that is based upon the amount of RF power that a facility is putting out. Our EMF report, uh, goes over the total RF output of the site, and lists what the maximum exposure in any area around the site would be, um, which we said was 3.6% of the federal limit.
And what's the distance that that kind of a percentage of the emission reaches out to?
Uh, that, that distance really, really depends upon the total power and the antenna pattern that a facility uses. So it, it's gonna vary depending upon, uh, site design.
So what's the maximum that would come out of this proposed antenna at this site? And then, given the distance, and what is the distance to that residence from this antenna?
I don't have that right in front of me, um, but the residence is on the backside of this antenna. The antenna is not radiating in that direction. So most of the energy from this antenna is radiating to the northeast and to the southeast.
And, and, yeah.
Mr. Zinovich, did you have any other questions?
Sorry, yeah, I, I lost my, uh, screen there. Um, I have one, I think, last question, so what is the location of another similar device with this capability? What's the next closest location?
Um, I believe the next similar, uh, facility would be at 917 Main Street, or at 241 Route 71 in Spring Lake.
What about along the ocean, going north?
Uh, going north to the end of Belmar, I don't have any other facilities of similar design to this. There is a larger macro site at, uh, 1,000 Ocean Avenue, but that is not designed the same as this site.
Okay, thank you. I don't think I have any other questions.
No, actually, Mr. Chairman, could I just ask a follow-up to, uh, Amory's excellent question?
Sure, sure, Mr. Kennedy.
Hey, um, Mike, is there any type of industry standard about, uh, how close, or, you know, or are there standards for the distances between, if you're next to a commercial use, or you're next to an industrial use, or you're next to a residential use? Are there any standards or best practice guidelines as to what, how, and, and all those types of things?
Uh, no, everything falls back to the federal, uh, emission standards.
So regardless of whether you're next door to a ice cream store, or a beauty parlor, or a single-family home, or an apartment building, or a?
Correct.
Yes, station?
So long as you can prove that the emissions meet the federal standards, and you're not exceeding the limit, um, there's no distance regulation.
Thank you.
So I guess, which is one more question. So is there any, is there, like, a capability that's a more powerful type of, uh, antenna that could be put at a higher location? For example, that there's a very tall hotel condo building that went up recently in Asbury Park. Um, is a site like that appropriate to handle the kind of issue that is experienced in this location during the summer? And to handle the excess traffic, you know, between Long Branch, Asbury, Belmar?
Uh, no. Um, to, to handle capacity issues, um, you typically need to create smaller targeted cover, uh, coverage areas. That way you can offload the macro system.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else with any questions? All right. Seeing none, we'll go to, uh, the public portion of the meeting. And, uh, April, if you would be kind enough to run that?
Sure. Um, please click the raise hand button, or dial star nine if you're by phone. Uh, when you come up to speak, please state your name and address. Go ahead, Angela.
Uh, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes. If you could just?
Yes, Angela, we can hear you.
If you could just state your name and address for the record, please?
Angela Patillo Cunio, and I live in California, and also in Belmar at 118th Avenue, which is, is that, uh, Mr. Zinovich just spoke about with the distance. You can see it in the picture behind Mama Luke's.
You know what? Let me just, that's where you went for the record, and thank you so much for participating tonight. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide any, will be the truth, the best of your knowledge, to help you guys?
Yes, I do.
Thank you so much.
So, um, board members, I had written a letter, but I, that I wanted to submit to get in front of your eyes, because I thought it would have been more effective, but I was told I could not submit it. And I wrote it after the November nineteenth meeting. I think it's just, in the interest of time, it's most effective if I just read it, and please excuse the repetition of what's already happened tonight. I just, it's kind of like, Mr., uh, uh, Kennedy, you're jumping back and forth between things. I'm trying to effectively integrate what I heard tonight, but I just can't get it done and pay attention to what's going on, so please indulge me. Okay, I am Angela Patillo Cunio, and with my husband Nick Cunia, owner of the property at 118th Avenue, Belmar. I was born and raised in Asbury Park, and have been going to Belmar for over fifty years. I reside in California, and also Belmar part of the year. I am an attorney admitted in New York and California, as is my husband in California. I very much appreciated the issues raised by the board at the conclusion of the Zoom meeting Thursday, November nineteenth, 2020, and also tonight. While questioning board members brought up critical concerns, particularly the fact that the borough of Belmar loses control if a further variance is granted to Verizon in addition to the variance already granted to Mama Luke's to operate as a pizza slash ice cream parlor in a residential area. As Mr. Fitzgerald pointed out in that meeting, there would be no motivation to improve the building, as has already happened to the property called the Mayfair Hotel, located at 1,000 Ocean Avenue. It is an eyesore, and it is my understanding that the owner has used a variance granted in a residential area to operate a hotel for further private profit to house several towers with no further possible borough oversight, as it has become a colocation site. This is in opposite to Mr. Coppolo, Coppolo's remarks with respect to the variance granted that night to the owner of the five-unit property on Ocean to become an improved single-family residence. He mentioned that he likes the direction Ocean has gone and is going in. I completely agree, and strongly hope that the board will continue to encourage and support this beautification process, process. Mama Luke's is so close to Spring Lake, and as we heard, the owner of the Breakers is not interested in granting Verizon a variance. I can only speculate this is because it would negatively impact the beauty and integrity of Spring Lake, lower property values, and commercialize the area. Many residents are currently away for the winter, so circulating a petition would be difficult at this time. And unfortunately, you know, the impact of having residents show up, because we have to use Zoom now because of COVID, which is nobody's fault, but I don't know that, you know, it's so much more impactful when you can have people attend. And at that meeting, the nineteenth, Chairman Lisco pointed out that Mama Luke's site becomes, could become a colocation site, which we've already talked about, I'm sorry for the repetition. However, my understanding is Verizon can then add to what they have placed there, stating that it is necessary for the safety and proper operation of the antenna, should something arise. Uh, and Mr. DeLucre that night said he thought it had to be within the same scope of what is already there, but I don't think there's anything precisely written about this and the requirement that Verizon is mandated to come back to the board if Verizon exceeds in scope what they initially installed. And of course, other wireless carriers. I think, you know, this thing about the colocation, I mean, you can put up a, a tall pole, forget about the roof at Mama Luke's, put up a tall pole and have AT&amp;T there. I don't, I don't really see why that is something that could not happen. And, you know, the, the wireless companies have a strong lobby, and we residents need the borough's continued oversight to take care of the interests of the residents and the property owners. You know, the FCC and the wireless companies won't do that. And as Mr. Malango, Mr. Fitzgerald asked that night, what about other public sites? Keeping commercial, within commercial? Now, I walk the boardwalk daily when I'm in Belmar, and the cell phone reception is quite good, up to the pavilion in Spring Lake. Now, maybe that's because I have AT&amp;T. And, um, Mr. Malongo's question about locating at the pavilion made much more sense, and I know we've talked about that tonight, and I don't understand why it, it wasn't high enough, I think, with Mr. Otis said, but, so you can make it a little higher. Um, and I also understand that if this variance is granted, the property would be commercial, this is what Mr. Fitzgerald talked about, talks about, it would become commercial in perpetuity and can never become residential again. Uh, and a following, I asked the board with greatest respect, does the, the board has the, the right to grant variances? Does the board have jurisdiction to grant a variance which would permanently change the nature from residential to permanently commercial? So I, I, this is an issue, I think, that has to be more thoroughly examined. And then, we spoke about positive criteria for this neighborhood, the surrounding neighborhoods, and these cell antennas do not benefit the residents. We have Wi-Fi and cell phone plans, and it benefits the visitors to the beach and cell phone carriers. And I think it's grossly unfair for the owners of Mama Luke's to profit further off of their current variance to now additionally connect further revenue, I assume, and further take away the board's supervision of an activity that takes place on that property. And I'm hoping we residents can entrust the board to be the safeguards of continuing the beautification of Belmar and protecting its residents. And, you know, Belmar means beautiful sea, and I'm asking that you please help keep it this way. You know, we're not the inheritors of the earth, we are the guardians for future generations. And when I bought this property almost three years ago, I finally got my beach place in my home area, and at that time, there was talk of Mama Luke's being sold to become condos, which would greatly improve the neighborhood, and this variance would take it in the opposite direction. And, and please don't let this become the Mayfair South, and have that be your legacy to our community. You know, and the, the areas that Verizon spoke about tonight, none of that about the colocation, and I don't think this will happen, and I, doesn't seem to me, and to my knowledge, and Justin, you know, in, in, in short, nothing's legally binding, and a lot of it's conjecture and is not conclusive, and I am not comfortable that there's assurances presented that these things that the board has raised and already has questions on are written down legally binding, any of that, I just don't see that, as an attorney, that, that's there. So, thank you. I, I would like to ask also that my, I can submit a letter in the record. I don't know if that's possible, but up to this point, I was not allowed to.
You know what? I can address that last part, Mr. Chairman, if you're okay?
Please.
So, first of all, uh, thank you very much for participating, and thank you very much for reading your letter. It's just, under the regulations that we have, and you can understand this, uh, we have to be, uh, we are a quasi-traditional board, and sort of have to operate in accordance with the court's rules of evidence and things like that. So theoretically, if you presented a letter or a petition, the board can't accept that, because the board and, and Mr. DeLucre can't cross-examine it, like, we can ask you questions now. Uh, but I'm, I'm ecstatic that you were able to, to participate, and, 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 and all of your comments are absolutely 100% part of the record, and, and will be considered.
And so I still can't send a letter, is what you're saying?
You, you, you can submit it, but it, it's not, you know, uh, it, it, you know, that was important, is what you said.
Yeah, I, I, I don't want to go outside what I'm able to do, but I would like to submit it for the record.
Thank you.
I think it helps for the board members to see it when they have so many things they're appearing, and so this resident letter is kind of nice to have there. I, at least I'll feel like I did my due diligence, you know?
You, you can submit it to April, but I'm, I'm glad you, you were able to testify tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patillo.
Linda Sharkus, Fourth Avenue. Good evening.
Oh, good evening. You swear that the information and testimony you're, to, to provide any, with the truth, the best of your knowledge, to help you guys?
To help me guide, yes. So, earlier this evening, there was a discussion about capacity relief. I'm a Verizon customer. Could, could you address where the cell towers are in Belmar, and what that coverage is like for the rest of town? Because in the summer, things aren't so good on Fourth Avenue. So, maybe when looking for relief, you should start at where the residents are year-round. We go from six thousand, less than six thousand residents, to, what, ten times that, or more during the summer. Could somebody from Verizon address that for me, please?
Um, if, if you'd like us to do that now, we can.
That would be great. There's a lot of us listening on the call.
Right. Um, I'm gonna ask our radio frequency engineer, uh, Mike Webster, to address the first part of that question, which I believe was, where are the other existing facilities in the area, and in particular, near you? Um, and then, uh, if he would, I'll ask him to also address how this proposal affects other locations within the network, and the kind of service that you can get from those locations.
Okay, that would be great.
Mike, can you handle that one?
Uh, yes. So, existing sites in the area, uh, we have Belmar Two, which is at 1,000 Ocean Avenue. Um, we have Belmar Rilo, which is at 1631 West Maplewood Road in Wall. Uh, we have Belmar Train Station, SNN, which is at 917 Main Street in Belmar. And we have Belmar North SNN, which is at 601 Main Street in Belmar. And Lake Como at 1731 Main Street in Lake Como.
I'm sorry, that was like 1731?
Yes, 1731 Main Street, Lake Como. This is all from Table One in our RF report, uh, and analysis of January fourteenth. Those are the sites in and around the area of our proposed site, um, in Belmar and the neighboring areas. As to, um, how Verizon goes about, uh, addressing capacity issues, um, I cannot definitively speak to providing coverage in the area of Fourth Avenue, as this site is down on Eighteenth Avenue. Um, I do know that the complementary system that is in our report, um, the ODS on Ocean Avenue does stretch along, uh, all of Belmar, from First Avenue down to, uh, Twenty Block. Um, and that is currently in discussions with the borough.
With my medical papers.
But as for any other additional sites to cover that northern area of Belmar, I do not have any in my notes at this time.
Okay, so, at the last meeting, it was my understanding that those, the sites on one through sixteen, would in effect the residential area, would be primarily focused on that beach block. Did I misunderstand that?
Uh, the, the ODS nodes will, uh, be omnidirectional. They're be put, they're being put in place to cover Ocean Avenue and the beach, but because of their nature, they will cover inland, um, for a block or two. Um, I don't have the exact coverage maps in front of me to know how far inland they're gonna cover, but they, they won't just stop right there at Ocean Avenue.
Okay. Well, I'm a few blocks back, I probably don't get the very good coverage from Main Street either. So, as you're working?
Go ahead.
So, what I hear you focusing on, as, um, Mr. Fitzgerald mentioned in the beginning, are So what I hear you focusing on, as Mr. Fitzgerald mentioned in the beginning, are transient peoples coming to the beach, not the people who would benefit from your services. So I'd like to see something done to increase the coverage here and for the residents a little more than, you know, the beach block.
By adding capacity into the areas where there are large amounts of people, and you remove them from the macro coverage, which in this case would be Belmar Two, you will then allow Belmar Two to provide the coverage to the areas that these relief sites are not accurately providing coverage today. So while these sites don't directly cover your area, they will allow the existing macro sites to provide better coverage into your area.
Okay, thank you. My next question goes back to what people have talked about putting the cells up. As we know, the 10th and Ocean Avenue building has, is in a state of disrepair, and people would be interested in developing, but they can't come up with a reasonable offer to cover the revenue that would be lost to these people by the towers. Similarly with, as this has already been addressed, it's not about, you know, the owner giving it, giving up the business. He's not going to want to sell it to somebody at market value. He'll want additional revenue, which would be lost when that building, when the building comes down for a run if they decide to make it a single-family residence. So earlier, I would suggest having a secondary location and at, you know, renewal time, have options on where that could go. So we would like to be more residential than having, you know, it's kind of enhanced, it's not the best building in town to put a tower on, because I would hope that's one of the buildings that would be disappearing in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sharkus. Before we bring up the next, the next member of the public, I'd like to take a couple-minute break just to use the restroom. If anybody, if nobody has any objections, can we break for 10 minutes? It's 9:20 now. We'll reconvene at 9:30. Obviously, a couple of thumbs up. All right, so with that, we'll adjourn for the moment.
That's the poll. I think it's that, yeah.
You know, it's interesting that you have Verizon, right? And your coverage is not that good, but there's a tower on 601.
Right.
Said 601 at the police station. So I'm really surprised you don't...
I have...
...like waters with...
No, not during the summer, when, that's what I'm trying to figure out, like, it's not...
And you have waters and, so there's coverage and capacity. If you're close to the tower, reasonably close to the tower, you have the waters...
Linda, you're not muted.
Oh, thank you.
Who's that?
Oh, you've got to be kidding. No! God, these elevators are the worst. Nobody else has an arm? Let us read that.
All right, everybody, it's 9:30. Thank you, Ken.
Okay, we're back on the record. I'm going to take a quick roll call. Mr. Hutchinson?
Here.
Mr. Malongo?
Here.
Ms. Dietz?
Here.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yeah.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Gregg?
Here.
Mr. Lisco?
Here.
Ms. Drazanovic?
All right.
Were we done answering Linda's questions?
I think Linda finished up, and we're out to the next member of the public.
Next one is Paul.
Rick, is your crew, crew on? You can hear us?
I can hear you. I can't speak for the others.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
Oh, good. My name is Paul Elia.
Yes, Paul, what is your name?
It's Paul Elia, and we have a home on 106 19th Avenue in Belmar.
Can you just spell your last name, please?
Sure, E-L-I-A.
Okay, and if you could just raise your right hand, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide any, will be the truth, the best you know, to help you guys?
You bet.
Thank you so much.
So I would like to reiterate the concerns that the well-spoken attorney who read her letter, and we second all of them. In addition to those, and in addition to the, to the concerns regarding the commercial versus residential nature of the property and its effect that this resolution would have on its, on its future, there are the, I don't understand why more conversation has not been held with long-term unproven health issues in relation to the 5G technology. This, this has not been tested, it's not been proven, and it is a serious concern. Aside from that, we on 19th Avenue have been asked for the number of years to, to, to accept and to, to live with the noise and the constant congestion from our other commercial neighbors like DJs and Mama Luke's that brings unfettered noise and concerns all summer long, so much so that we can't even sleep with our windows open. That's a secondary issue to these concerns, which are even more, more important, that could affect long-term health issues. I implore the board to do their due diligence and, and vote and deny this. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mike.
Yes, thank you very much. First, I'd like to...
You know what, Mike, I'm sorry, this is Captain of the Board Attorney. If you could just state your name and your address, please?
Absolutely. Michael Gratale, G-R-A-T-A-L-E, 117th Avenue.
Okay, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide any, will be the truth, the best you know, to help you guys?
Yes, I do.
Thank you so much.
As I was listening this evening, I jotted down a number of different things, and I'm not going to belabor the points, because Ms. Patrillo said everything that I was thinking of, right down the list. I've been a citizen of, I've been in Belmar since 1974, so I've seen a lot, I've seen a lot of changes. And one of the things that I saw, the main points that I just would like to repeat, is that I did not hear anything from Verizon where this is a benefit to our community. I do not see anywhere where it is benefiting any of the residents. It's only benefiting the owner of Mama Luke's. And I really would like to echo the thing that was made about the breakers. You know, they, they get off scot-free by saying, "We're not interested." So because they're not interested, they are, they're shielded from any of the federal laws that have jurisdiction over cell towers. Pretty much, we're putting up a cell tower within, within a residential area that is going to benefit the people during the summer. I have Verizon. My son has Verizon. We're there all summer long, and we don't have any problems with our, with our, with our service. And as the last speaker said, we do not have any input or any data that supports any of the safety safeguards that are supposedly brought in here with this, with this tower. So I would just implore the board to think of the residents and think of the community before we think of another business and another individual who does not even live in Belmar, my understanding. So again, thank you for your time, and I hope you make the right decision.
Thank you. Mr. Gratale.
Go ahead, Hugh.
Eugene Kramer, Fourth Avenue.
All right, good evening, Mr. Kramer. And as I recall, I think you were sworn at the first hearing, correct?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I just have one question for the applicant. Is the reliability of the proposed installation dependent on the reliability of Jersey Central Power and Light Company?
I can respond to that, yes. We would defer that answer to...
Um, we would, uh, defer that answer to either of, uh, Mike Webster or Colleen Connolly. Sounds like a technical question.
Yeah, I can, I can take that question. Um, yes, this, this, uh, site would be pow, would need electrical power, and that would be powered by JCPN-L. Um, because this is a small cell installation, it will not have an onsite generator.
Yeah, okay, um, actually, uh, reliability is very important, uh, to those of us that live around here. And, uh, I guess we, uh, this past summer, we did experience, uh, an outage, uh, over there on 10th Ave, Michael 10th Ave. Yeah, okay, I gue, I guess that's about it. Uh, if, if it doesn't lend more reliability, I, I, I think that should be a criteria that, uh, should, should be attached to any, uh, any of this sort of installation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer.
Go ahead, Michael.
Hi, thank you, my name is Michael Hackett, I, uh, am at 110 19th, I've been a resident for 37 years, family's been around for a long time.
You know what, with this going square, you insert, sorry to interrupt-
Yep, absolutely.
Do you, uh, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide any, will be the truth, the best you know, as to help you die?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I just want to say, I mean, uh, I'm all for everybody, you know, business and everything else, but uh, being that I do live in close proximity, I do have a one-year-old, and I do have another baby on the way, I would be greatly concerned about the 5G that has been raised as far as different health issues. I know Verizon had come and said that we, they are within the parameters, I do understand that, but, uh, I do know the technology is new, I do know there are concerns out there, and I am concerned about a cellular tower being in such close proximity for myself, as well as my children. Um, I also find it kind of interesting, a cellular tower being on top of a restaurant, and the restaurant serving the food to the public, so, that's a, that's a whole different story. Either way, um, Mr. Fitzgerald brought up a great point, which is something that never crossed my mind, uh, but it becoming a, just a cellular tower, no longer needing the actual restaurant itself, and letting the building become dilapidated as Sideroff's has. So we don't need that in, we're in such close proximity as well. We already have been looking at Sideroff's boarded-up facility for 25, 30 years, so my main concern is being health, but after Mr. Fitzgerald brought that point up, I thought it was a great one to, uh, to echo as well, so as everybody else said, I do hope the board makes the right decision, I do hope they put the residents of Belmar first, uh, rather than just looking at it as a, as a business opportunity for one or few individuals or a corporation, but that's all I have to say, thank you for, uh, hearing me out, and I'll leave it with that.
Thank you, Mr. Hackett.
Uh, go ahead. Unmute.
George Catronbone, owner of 103 and 105 19th Avenue.
All right, good evening, if you could just spell your last name, please?
Sure, C-A-T, Cat, R-A-M, as in Mary, B-O-N-E, Bone, Catronbone.
All right, good evening and welcome, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide any, will be the truth, the best you know, as to help you die?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'm in Belmar since 1949. And, uh, I would like to say, I would like to, um, acknowledge and thank the board for their comments, I think they did a great job. I thought the, uh, Verizon team, uh, has had some weak responses that I'm very concerned about. This is, does not a benefit at all to the residents, it's only a detriment. And the common, the common denominator here, it's a very emotionally charged subject, and the board has done a great job, and I really don't know why Verizon and Mama Luke's team of expert witnesses hasn't done a better job. Our Mr. Ross, regarding the, the, uh, the tower, the tower seekers found breakers acceptable, but if the, the owner was, was, was not amenable, that the Spring Lake Pavilion, which is really north, that exceeds the RF threshold? I mean, how can they say that they're not making sense? And, and that, that, that kind of response is not acceptable, and Mark Fitzgerald, I mean, his concern about the usage of, of epic concern, and it wa, it wasn't adequately answered. And it was, and that's a very, very critical issue that Mike just brought up as well. And Mr. Hutchinson's question wasn't answered regarding the life safety issues, I don't care what the 5G, that, that, in meeting the, the federal guidelines, that doesn't erase the threat and danger, that is a clear and present danger. So, I'm very, very concerned, and, and, um, I'm concerned that Ocean Avenue in Belmar really has been the lighthouse of, of the shore area there, and for us to let a, a residential area like that become bastardized by the, the possibility of, of multiple, uh, s, the towers, that, and the other, the other redundancy or, it was ludicrous, is that learning from, from the responses here, that, that it would only serve the Verizon customers on the beach. I mean, what is that about? And, and as far as, uh, Colleen's comments about Mama Luke's being structurally able to, to, uh, take care of the, uh, the construction, and not to worry about, you know, multiples because of the sloped roof and, and such, you know, one of our council members said, "You can work right off of the flat roof," and, and, and Petillo said, you know, "You can extend the towers, you know, to meet the 38-foot." And, and, and now why are we all of a sudden now wanting to go beyond 38? And they expect for us, as, as, as our council, to, to, to allow for that? And we're, we're kept under very, very strict, the, the board and land usage and codes and such. Belmar's done a great job, and anybody that's tried to build or put additions on or whatever knows that Belmar's tough, and they do it really to keep the integrity and keep the beauty of, of Belmar, you know, what it was by our grandparents and, and what we expect to believe it to our children. And for it to become a possible danger as far as the, as far as the radiation, and to, to cross our fingers and toes, you know, I just think that's lame. And I hope that the board continues to do, do, to, to do their due diligence to, uh, protect the residents and keep, uh, uh, Belmar, uh, safe, from self-serving, uh, types of initiatives like this, um, that sometimes falls through the cracks because of, of our city fathers not being careful and making, I mean, the decision-makers. So I thank you and good night.
Thank you, Mr. Catonbone. Is there anyone else to open?
Hello?
Hello? Could you please state your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Matthew Ranieri, 107 19th Avenue in Belmar.
Hey, how do you, spell your last name?
Ranieri, R-A-N-I-E-R-I.
Thank you, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide any, will be the truth, the best you know, as to help you die?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, but first, I'd, I'd like to thank all the board members for their, uh, good questions, uh, about this Verizon situation. Uh, you know, one, one thing I, I don't think was addressed enough by, by Verizon, uh, are the health concerns that, uh, that us, that, you know, we're close to the, uh, location on, on 19th Avenue, on the block away. Uh, I'm concerned for, you know, my family and, and myself. Uh, and I'd like to ask, you know, Verizon, if they can 100% guarantee that there's no health risks for my family and myself.
I can take that. Um, within the limits of what the, the FCC mandates that we build equipment by, um, the emissions from this site will not be more than 3.6% of what, uh, the FCC allows for general population exposure. Um, this includes frequencies from, um, low-band emissions and, uh, high-band emissions that include the 28 gigahertz band that 5G would be deployed on.
Okay, all, all that, all that technical jargon is, is fine, and, and I appreciate it. But I still haven't heard anyone say that they 100% guarantee that there'd be no health risk for my family and myself. I don't know, we call this the FCC guidelines. Is, is there, is enough known about, uh, 5G to, at this point, to guarantee, right now, that there's no health risks? Anyone?
Um, I'll, I'll respond, uh, to extend, anyone can, um, and I'll assume it's not a rhetorical question. We have to operate within whatever regulatory guidelines are set for the industry, which we're doing. Those, I have to assume, include evaluation of all the different technologies that are in use, including 5G. Um, and the standards that, that apply right now are, are the ones we have to go by, and uh, as Mr. Webster indicated, we meet them substantially. Or should say, we substantially exceed them.
Okay, but, but again, it, it's, but, which is fine, but the, nothing has still been said about guaranteeing that there's no health risks. I mean, would you want this next to your house? Would you, would you want this tower right next door to your house?
If that strikes me, I, I wouldn't have an issue with it.
Right, okay, I, I'll be honest, I, I'm not, I'm, at this point, I'm not satisfied that it's safe for my family, and to me, that's paramount. Uh, you know, uh, you know, Verizon providing, and, you know, access to, uh, internet and telephone calls for people on the beach is fine, uh, I'm, we're year-round. Uh, I, I'll be exposed to this, uh, you know, 24/7. Uh, this is my concern, uh, again, uh, my family's health and, and my own health. And I'm, I'm hoping that board members will, you know, will, you know, agree with this, and they'll vote appropriately.
Was that in the study, Ranieri?
Uh, yes, I, actually, my, my wife is, uh, sitting next to me, she would also like to make a comment.
All right.
Hi, my name is Mary Ann Ranieri.
All right, good evening, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide any, will be the truth, the best you know, as to help you die?
Yes, sir, I do.
Thank you.
Um, along the same lines that my husband just spoke in many of our neighbors tonight, um, from what I've read, and I know the FCC says, what, 3.6%, but from what I've read and what I've understood, and I'm not scientific, but 5G has really not been around for very long, and the real known effects are, you know, really just guesses at this point. Um, how long have the studies been in effect for the 5G? Does anyone have an answer to that?
Uh, if, if Mike Webster, uh, has anything to offer on that, I, I'd give it to him.
Um, the, let, let me try to differentiate between technology and frequency. Um, 5G as a technology is just how data is encoded on the frequency. The frequency itself is what the emission standards is, uh, developed to determine how much exposure you are allowed to have. So from that regard, uh, the emission standard that is out there has covered these frequency bands uh, since they were published in, I believe it was the 90s, I don't have the exact date in front of me. Yeah, I do not have the date that this was published in front of me. Um, but then, so from a technology standpoint, uh, that, that's independent to the, the frequency itself.
Um, also, my understanding for what Mr. Kennedy spoke about is the FCC uh, guidelines would supersede what the board has to say if there is a gap in coverage. So again, as a resident in Belmar since 1999, um, and we do have Verizon coverage, which I've never had, and she was, matter of fact, who switched to Verizon because we had better coverage. So I'm not sure that there is a gap, and the gap just se, simply seems to be for the summer population. So is there really a benefit to, I'm sure financially, but is there really a benefit to a two-to-three-month coverage versus all of us who are here for 12 months? What's the benefit to the 12-month full-time resident that pays taxes? 12 months out of the year, pays for a full-price beach tag, uh, has to fight for a parking space, so what's our, what's our real benefit here?
Wait, was that, was that a rhetorical question, Mary Ann?
No.
Was it directed towards?
Why, we, I mean, financially, I understand, financial benefit is to, uh, the owner of Mama Luke's, and I understand now why he kind of took that property, because it's standalone. He'll make money whether he sells pizza or not. But we, who are paying taxes every year, you know, full, full taxes with really, you know, it's not like I got a break for parking or a break for a beach badge. So now Verizon wants to put a tower in my backyard, what is, what is my benefit? Verizon, can, can Verizon answer that? What's the benefit to me?
Uh, sure, I can, and, you know, we have these, uh, applications and installations in a lot of towns, a lot of shore towns, where you have summers spike in population, and the question is raised, often by local people, "What's in it for me?" And the real answer is that any shore town does benefit from having, you know, attractions that, uh, that bring in summer crowds, that spend money, uh, that help the local economy. And the benefits of service, you need, you need them most intensely, obviously, in the summer, but the benefits to, you know, your local police and first responders, they're year-round, and the improved service is there year-round as well, for the year-round residents. You may not have as intense a need, obviously, because your population is, is quite a bit smaller in the off-season, uh, but it's nonetheless there, you know, it's, it's incremental, uh, but you'll, you'll see, you know, faster response time, faster data, um, loading, it's, you know, it's the benefit of improved service generally, and specifically improved service that lets you, you know, still serve the needs of the people who come to Belmar in the summer for the reasons that they come there, and I assume, you know, help your local economy and, you know, your local businesses.
So respectfully, I ask, have the residents of Belmar voiced a concern about a lack of service from Verizon 12 months out of the year?
Uh, I, I can't testify to that. Um, I know that we do get, we, being Verizon, uh, get feedback all the time, and part of the decision-making process when you decide to go someplace is not just that maybe you've got a situation such as this presented in Belmar where there is, you know, a spike in demand, uh, that's not being met, um, but also where you have, you know, complaints, maybe anecdotal, but still complaints of uh, inadequate service, drop calls, whatever it might be. You know, those are all the factors that go into deciding where you're going to, uh, look to put new facilities. So I don't know specifically here, but typically, that's what you will have seen at Verizon, that, you know, a mix of, uh, let's call them objective things, such as the, the trends in usage and need in general, and then more specific, uh, instances of complaints about service.
I thank you for your answer, and just the one last thing I'd like to say for the zoning board- And just the one last thing I'd like to say for the zoning board is, I do appreciate the input from the zoning board. We recently went before the board, and I thank you. And I know that the purpose of the board is to have a quality of life here in Belmar and to preserve the family environment of Belmar. And I would just ask that that family environment and quality of life be of major consideration for making a determination on whether or not that tower is allowed to exist above Mama Luke's. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meniere.
I do have, we do have another family member here. Is that okay if she also speaks?
Sure.
Hi, my name is Venus Meniere, V-E-N-U-S.
V-E-N-U-S?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. You provided the information and testimony you're about to provide to the extent you provided it will be the truth, the best your knowledge, to help you guide.
I do.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank the board for allowing everyone to share their opinions tonight. And I hope to make this a quick one. My concern, being a younger member probably of our community and planning and wanting to be involved in this community for the rest of my life, because I love this town, is the fact that this technology is still very new. And as everyone said, the health issues are still yet undefined. As someone who works in the technology field, I am very aware of what 5G is and how it works. And I think that the, also the Telecommunications Act was established in 1996 is the year that we were discussing earlier in terms of last time that our exposure limits have been updated. And I think a lot of things have changed since 1996, and everyone on this call would agree. And I think that that allows for a lot of gaps in understanding of what is possible with this technology. That being said, as someone who plans to hopefully have a family here one day and happens to live right down the street from where this would be, I have my own reason to not want angles in my own backyard, as do many other places around the world, as 42 countries have appealed to the United Nations and European Commission asking about mandatory on the rollout of 5G because of the possible health effects and scientific studies that do exist and have been done so far. Outside of that, I wonder what the plan is if we start to roll out this technology, because 5G, unlike traditional, relies on smaller, typically smaller satellites to work, which would require more than just this one to become established within town in order for 5G to fully take effect and to benefit. So I was wondering from Verizon, is this a one-off? Or do you guys have a plan to expand after this one tower is set up?
I'm not sure I understood the question, but right now, the proposal, besides Mama Luke's, it would be for the installation of the DAS system along the boardwalk. So that's the current plan in the overall, to address the service needs in town.
Great, so that's basically what it's saying is that there will be multiple smaller outputs where this technology would be able to connect at shorter distances in order to ensure that the 5G aspect of it is actually working and able to take effect, which would require and expose a lot of other people to this radiation and the possible health risks that this could cause. That's not a question, and that was more just a statement of fact. And I really hope that there is a lot of thought that gets put into this, and also from the board's perspective. I hope that we look at not just our town, but also how other countries are taking this so seriously and where countries and states that are trying also to help prevent this. Is there, would I love nothing more than to take my computer to the beach and work from there with strong internet? Absolutely. But I would like to also ensure that my family and my friends and my community are safe in doing so. That's all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Meniere.
The person labeled as Mike, did you want to speak again?
Yes, I just, I don't think it was lost on...
I'm sorry, did you say your name for the record, please?
Mike Rizali, 117th half.
And you were previously sworn, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
I don't think it was lost on the board, but I do want to point out for the record that when the representatives from Verizon were asked if they could guarantee that there will be no health concerns or health risks, it was not answered. We did get a definition again, but we did not get a yes-or-no answer. And that question that was asked by Mr. Meniere required a yes-or-no answer, and it was not given. So I hope that's not lost in this evening's discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Rizali. Was there anything else?
Nope, that was it.
That was it.
Mr. Chairman?
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I have one final question that I'd like to just ask because the topic didn't...
Hang on, Mr. Fitzgerald, let's close the public portion. We'll go right back to you. All right, seeing as no other members on the public, we'll close the public portion, and we'll open it up to board comment for the most part, or Mr. Fitzgerald's question. Go ahead, Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yeah, if we could just start with the question. We've had multiple proposals over the years, none of which have happened yet, about putting free Wi-Fi up along the entire beachfront. It would not be significantly intrusive. I understand the proposals, most of them were gonna... There's power up there already, and potentially the Wi-Fi hotspots would have been mounted on the light posts. I don't know if that thing ever happened or took off, but if it does, right, and with access to the beach, this capacity problem, because I'm fully convinced the capacity problem is really has to do with the amount of people that are on the beachfront in the summertime. And if the Wi-Fi becomes readily, free Wi-Fi becomes readily available, I think the capacity problem gets mitigated. And I don't know whether it's appropriate or Verizon has any comment on that, but I do want to make sure that that fact, that comment or question gets put out there. And Verizon, do you have any, you know, comment on that relative to free Wi-Fi? I know that's not in your best interest financially because you'd rather see cellular get put in. But if free Wi-Fi goes up there, I think your cellular usage problem would be resolved.
I guess really the only comment we could have at this point would be that, as you indicated, it's been talked about. Nothing has happened. We kind of have to deal with the situation that exists rather than, you know, what might happen. And particularly, if it's something that's been talked about and hasn't happened.
Right, but we can go to the town and bring this issue to them and stress the importance of it because, you know, obviously, you're hearing a lot of concerns being voiced here. And if there is an alternate solution to solve the capacity problem, and it may not necessarily be a Verizon cellular tower solution, there's a bit of an obligation to at least explore that more seriously than we have in the past. I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Mr. Fitzgerald. Mr. Kennedy, where are we right now? Do you owe us any explanations? Can we move forward?
Yeah, I mean, I tend to think that, from the early conversations, that we're going to do more research on some of those questions that they had. I didn't know if that's the sentiment of the board.
I know at least one or two members did ask for some specific answers. I think it was Ms. Dietz, and I think I understand what she was asking and agree. A clarification on that might be good for the board.
And I think there was some discussions about, could there be restrictions on, meaningful restrictions on colocation? And I think there was just some further questions regarding the limitations of the restrictions vis-à-vis the financial federal regulations. And I think there was a question regarding the questions about the tying somehow in the, tying in the antenna use with the, for lack of a better word, functionality or continued functionality of the underlying building or use.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Those are things that if, and I say this respectfully, if we're looking for a legal quote-unquote answer or guidance on that, I would definitely have to do some more research on that. I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm just not prepared to answer those nuanced questions, excellent questions tonight.
I got you. Mr. DeLucre, do you think you could answer those questions tonight? Would it be better coming back, hearing the answers, and then discussing some more?
My takeaway from tonight's proceedings is that there are substantial enough questions that probably need offline discussion on our side and between myself and Mr. Kennedy. And I understand, as he's just expressed, there are certain things he wants to look at as well. So my request to the board at this point would be to carry us to next month, to give us time to do that follow-up work and provide the board either in advance or, you know, at the next hearing, however appropriate, with whatever responses and thoughts we may have on those issues.
All right, thank you, Mr. DeLucre. April, do we have openings next month?
Well, I have one application that needs to be heard. We just carried the one from earlier tonight. And I have about six more pending to need to get before the board.
Wait, great.
And I do understand and appreciate the scheduling pressures that you have. What we would ask, though, is, because we did carry for close to four months because of the corollary issue of the DAS system, which was a necessary thing in order to, you know, better understand how that impacts this. But where that puts us is, we really targeted March as the meeting we needed to be heard at. And, you know, I think it's going differently with the decision tonight. Because if there's going to be an approval and we're going to build it in order to get it online for the summer season, March was probably the last best shot. We, you know, if it's got to be April, then, you know, we make it work. But when we get past that, then the summer season will be lost again. So if we can be crammed into the April session, we'll do everything we can in advance, working with Mr. Kennedy, to get the board, you know, as much information as we have on these couple of issues that have come up so that, you know, maybe the time that we're spent, we need to spend live at the hearing in April would be fairly small.
I think that's acceptable, Mr. DeLucre, or acceptable request.
Thank you.
April, Kevin, I mean, that's, you know...
Yeah.
They're the first in line, you know, we...
Sorry, I did remember that there are two applications that I had given that meeting day two, plus the one from earlier. So this application would be number four for the night.
We're number one for the...
There's one other option, which I'm sure the board's aware of. We don't typically bring it up, but if the board would be open to a special meeting, certainly, we'd make ourselves available. I know it's difficult, maybe, to schedule with the number of people that we'd need to. But we would definitely be open to doing that.
If we were to do that, though, you would have to re-notice because we wouldn't be able to establish that date tonight.
Well, that's understood. As long as we had...
We also have a special meeting coming up too.
Right.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
I think there's a comment, there's a special meeting already scheduled for next week, I think, April, correct?
Correct.
Oh, okay, yeah, and that would be out of reach for us anyway, I think.
Right, right, and I think that one's actually already full as well. Or at least this one, I think. So, Mr. Chairman, I, what I would think is we should adjourn it to a date certain tonight. And then, you know, if the board wants, April can talk about a special meeting later on, but I don't know that there's an appetite for that. And if not, we at least should give, I think, at least Mr. DeLucre would want a set night for, I mean, a definitive meeting date tonight to leave it, so he doesn't have to re-notice unless there's a special meeting.
I agree, I agree with the date, setting a date certain tonight. I guess it's just a matter of deciding what the date is. Who is this up to? Is it up to me?
Yes. You know, I mean, obviously, we try to juggle things as best we can. So, you know, within your reasonable discretion, absolutely. Or you can adjourn it and then say, look, I don't necessarily know if you're going to get heard, and we'll have to check in with that later on. I mean, there's a lot of things that go into all these factors.
All right. I think we just take our next available date for this hearing. I know that's not your wish, Mr. DeLucre, but we've had a lot of these applications that take a long time to go through. We don't get all our questions answered. And we've got a stacked-up list of applicants here. What we've been doing is trying to process them as fairly as possible and moving them through. With that, April, can you tell us what the next available application date is, or meeting date would be?
So after April 22nd, it's May 27th.
All right. I would then propose it's, we hear this Verizon, this Verizon application again, we carry it to the May 27th meeting.
Mr. DeLucre, again, I know that the timing is a sensitivity, as it is with all applications, but you have been hanging around, and we appreciate that. For the record, do you consent to extend the timeframe within which the board has to act if this application is going to be carried to May 27, 2021?
The answer will be yes, but may I make an additional request? If something opens up between, excuse me a second. If something opens up on the April session, if somebody drops off, if we could be moved to that session, that would certainly be helpful. If we needed to, we could re-notice. Or if the board was open to this, we could announce this application for the April meeting with the understanding that, you know, it may not happen, and it could be a last-minute decision based on what your agenda looks like. And if we got to April and there was nothing available, then, you know, just be a question of announcing at that meeting that it's going to happen in May.
Mr. Kennedy, that sounds fair. We put them on the list as the fourth applicant for that night.
Sure.
And we got work.
Yes, and it's just the understanding that we all know that if nothing breaks his way, he's probably not going to be heard that night. But we can, April, what is the April date?
The 22nd.
All right, so we would be, the proposal then is to carry this, adjourn this hearing to April 22, 2021, 6 o'clock PM, correct, April?
Correct.
And it's going to be a remote meeting?
Yes.
And without the need for any further public notice? So, ladies and gentlemen, there's a lot of you who zoomed in tonight, and on behalf of the chairman and the board, totally appreciate your, investing your time in this application. But there will not be another notice. So if any of your friends had to get off tonight and zoom out, please let them know to zoom back in on April 22, 2021. So, Rich DeLucre, do you, on behalf of your client, consent to extend the timeframe within which the board has to act on the matter?
I do.
Okay, thank you. And, Mr. Chairman, just for the record, we should probably have a quick motion to so carry this application to April 22, 2021.
Sure, I'll make that motion. Can I get a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
None. Thanks, Mr. DeLucre. Thanks, Mr. DeLucre. We'll see you, April.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time and patience and we'll work closely with Mr. Kennedy between now and then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, board members, we have an executive session that we're going to try to keep to 10 minutes after this meeting. So you'll have to log off and log back in.
Hold on, don't do that yet.
Right?
I have one more thing before we do that.
Sure, go ahead, April.
I received a letter from Len Forsyth of 1599 Maplewood Road. I'll just read it real quick. Due to the uncertainty created by COVID-19, which included employment instability and the ability to find contractors, we are requesting an additional 24 month extension to complete construction on the addition approved by the board. Based on when we were approved by the board, we have 24 months from May 28th, 2020 to complete construction. If our request is approved, our new required completion date would be May 28th, 2024.
Does anybody on the board have any objections to extending it that far? I see none. April, has he started construction yet?
No.
Nothing's been started?
No.
Why don't we do one year?
Mr. Gray's offering, then we offer him one year.
He needs to call Malanga. If the guy's taking that long, you gotta jump. I mean, it was.
His resolutions stay till 2022 is when he would have to have it completed by. So he was asking for two more years beyond that. I think it's not an issue of getting a, I mean, he also said, you know, with COVID, there's probably financial issues with work's instability.
Is anybody opposed to offering, oh, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Is it an entire knockdown and a brand new house being built? Is this, this is.
No, it was, it was an addition.
All additions, I think.
Yeah.
Off the side.
Is anybody opposed to offering him one additional year? And then he would have the option to come back and ask for more if he needs it? And we'd hopefully encourage him that he can get it done by 2023? Is that right?
Yes.
All right, does that work for everybody?
All right, and are you okay with me just sending him a letter for that?
I think so, unless anybody.
Yeah, we don't, I mean, if we do a resolution, it'll just be extra money that he has to pay for escrow. So I think it's simple enough that we can just put a letter in the file and April can just notify the borough personnel that need to know.
Okay.
Excellent.
All right, so yes, we are going to go into closed session. We are going to, I'm gonna, we're gonna need a motion to adjourn the regular meeting and go into closed session. We are not going to come back to public session because there's no more action that needs to be taken.
And just for the record, this, this two-part motion to A, adjourn the public meeting and B, go into executive session. Just by New Jersey law, we have to say that we are going to be talking about pending litigation, including the Defranco litigation case. Minutes will be kept and made available to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. So, Mr. Chairman, if we could have a motion.
I'll make that motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Aye.
Aye.
So in your email, you have the separate Zoom instructions for the.